Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, July 15, 2024. Thanks to everybody here in the chambers and everybody watching online. Council, thanks for being here, staff as well. We will begin our meeting as we always do. If you're able, if you could please stand, remove your lids, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks, everybody, for being here this evening. Our first order of business this evening, council, is to approve our agenda, and our agenda includes this this evening. Under introductory items, under 2.1, we have an introduction of new employees, and I think we've got a handful of employees from a couple of different departments that we'll be meeting this evening. Our consent business, Councilmember Revas has consent this evening, and there is one item that didn't make the initial packet, but it was added in. It was item 3.13, and that is to have the city and the council to approve the sign-on to a letter to the Public Utilities Commission regarding gas utility resource planning. And I think there is information available online, and I know Emma is here if anybody has questions on that, but that would be added as an item 3.13 under our consent agenda. Under our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we have two hearings tonight, and they're somewhat related. Item 4.1 is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to construct a veterans memorial on Civic Plaza, and item 4.2 is a resolution for a budget adjustment to transfer strategic priorities funds to that Veterans Memorial Fund project. Item 5, our organizational business, we've got a couple of study items tonight. One is regarding, 5.1 is regarding an administrative streamlined development approval study, and item 5.2 is regarding, a study item regarding our single-room occupancy or co-living standards. We'll wrap up our meeting as we always do with our city council policy and issue update. Council, any questions on that? If not, I would move approval of the agenda as stated, including, as I mentioned, the item 3.13, which has been added.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept tonight's agenda this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you much. We have an agenda, and as I said, we have, our first item is our introduction of new employees, and we've got two different departments. Who wants to go first, Melissa or Amy? Amy gets to go first. Come on up. Amy Chaney, our IT guru here in the city of Bloomington, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I'm pleased to introduce Abdi Ahmed. Abdi started with the Information Technology Department on February 12 of this year, and he is a network administrator. He works with our current network infrastructure and assists in evaluating new technologies. He helps with design, configuration, and upgrades of equipment and systems. In the few months that he's been here, he has helped identify and correct issues and has been part of a team to develop a more streamlined inventory process. Abdi is a graduate of Metropolitan State University and is currently working on his master's degree at Louisiana State University. He has worked for, he last worked for Creative Planning, a managed service provider here in Bloomington. Abdi?
It's nice to meet you guys. I've been in the private sector for a couple of years, and this is actually my first government role, so I'm looking forward to kind of bringing a fresh eyes to the city of Bloomington and sharing some experience and ideas I have. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. We're very glad to have you. You've been on board since February, is that correct?
Yeah, for about five months.
I'm surprised. We haven't seen you beforehand, so it's good to see you. Welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you guys.
Thanks for being here. Thank you much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Manderscheid, our city attorney, has a couple of introductions, and our legal staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I gave, with the city manager's permission, our folks the chance to appear remotely if that was, worked better for their lives, and it did. So I'm sure that they have joined, and they'll be pulled up on the screen here. We have three individuals here tonight from legal. Megan started in December. She is our crime victim liaison. I know that's a position that many of you are familiar with. Megan is a grant-funded, partially grant-funded position. We get money from the state and federal Office of Justice programs, and she is very busy. She's in the courtroom as well as in the office. She works with victims to ensure access to the justice process, and will help them fill out restitution forms and explain to them the process so that they can participate in a level that's meaningful to them. Prior to coming to the city of Bloomington, Megan worked in the nonprofit world and also at some of our other local government jurisdictions. Megan, you want to add anything?
Just that I'm happy to be here. Thanks.
Well, welcome, Megan. Glad to have you on board.
All right. Teresa has been here since March. She is an office assistant. She sits at our front desk, AKA The Rock, because we had to make that out of rocks. And the main part of her job duties are entering cases and preparing the calendar for our prosecutors. We're in court most days of the week, and so she works with another person in our office who is part-time to make sure that those tasks are completed so that our cases get opened in a timely manner and that our prosecutors are available, excuse me, prepared and ready to do their work in the courtroom. Teresa also answers the phone, and so if people call legal, Teresa will likely be the one that they will work with. Teresa, you want to tackle, or you want to take any questions or add anything to it?
No, I'm just, just like Megan, I'm very happy to be here and to meet everybody.
I'm glad to have you. Thanks for joining us this evening.
All right. And Jackson is our newest addition. Jackson is a prosecutor. He joined us last month, and prior to being a prosecutor for the city of Bloomington, he clerked for Hennepin County, and, for Hennepin County Judge, and he did his legal training at the University of St. Thomas Law School. Jackson, you want to add anything?
I'm just excited to be here and serve this community.
Well, thank you for being here, Jackson. Appreciate it.
Jackson is the result of the budget adjustment that you all approved to authorize the city in-house prosecution to have an additional prosecutor. So we are, as I mentioned, in court most days of the week, and Jackson is, Jackson, you were handling your first calendar pretty much on your own, right, last week?
Yep, so last Thursday, I think, was my first calendar, Thursday or Wednesday, but before that, just observing and helping out with different tasks and learning as fast as I can.
Yeah, so he got to jump into the deep end. All right, so thank you for the opportunity to introduce everyone, and I'm super excited to have a fully-staffed legal department.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Abdi, Megan, Teresa Jackson, thanks much for being here. Thanks for your work with the city of Bloomington. You're part of a great staff, and looking forward to your service to the city and to the residents of the city. So thanks much for being here. Welcome. Council, next on our agenda is our consent business, and as I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Revas has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Revas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm aware that Councilmember Mua is holding 3.8. Are there any other holds? Then I will move to tonight's consent agenda items 3.1 to 3.7 and 3.9 to 3.13.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, or, excuse me, by Revas, second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's consent agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Mua, you were holding item 3.8?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the election judges who have volunteered their time to support the elections coming up here in the fall in light of the events that happened this weekend. I do want to wish former President Trump a quick recovery, but it highlights the importance of having strong local elections, and these people, we have two pages, three columns in each page filled with people who have volunteered their time and energy to support our elections here. So I just want to take a moment and thank them for doing that. Anything else? I will move to approve a resolution appointing election judges for the primary and election and general elections 2024.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the resolution appointing election judges for the primary and general elections for 2024. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Revas, thank you much for the consent agenda this evening. We will move on to our two public hearings of the evening now. Item four, our hearings, excuse me, one, one public hearing, two items under item four, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. The first is a public hearing, item 4.1, regarding an ordinance to construct a veterans memorial on Civic Plaza. Mr. Verbrugge is going to lead us through this one. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. Just moments ago, on the consent agenda item 3.12, the council approved and amended and restated member and understanding with Bloomington Remembers Veterans, the organization that has been working arduously over the past several years to make sure that our veterans are appropriately honored within the community of Bloomington and with whom we've been working for at least six or seven years now on this project. So the amended and restated MOU reflected a couple of significant steps. One was the relocation of the site, and I'll talk about that in just a second, and the second was a contribution from the city of Bloomington towards the project in the amount of $250,000. So the, the site is being relocated on Civic Plaza campus property to the area east, at the east end of the east parking lot, that triangular area out there. And the reason that we look to an alternative site is during the construction document drafting process, the, the presence of the utilities, we knew about the utilities. We didn't realize how much of a barrier it was going to be to constructing the memorial on that location. The, the risk to future memorial into the city, if there ever will be a utility break, was more than I think any of us wanted to contemplate, because we certainly want the memorial to be one that endures. We looked at alternative options, and the east parking lot is the, is the best option to keep it on the campus and still maintain the original vision, just has a little bit of a re-imagination that has to happen because of the curvature of the site there. And so there's, there's additional cost to the project that requires the design team at Leeway Daily to go back and, and redraft the planning documents and do a new site survey, and because that was an unanticipated expense for the project, city felt it was appropriate to step forward and also to make a contribution towards the project itself. As a reminder, our friends at Bloomington Remembers Veterans were successful working with our local legislature to get $350,000 in last year's capital bonding bill for the project. The contribution that we're talking about this evening from the city is $250,000, and then they are raising additional money through donations and then contributions for commemoration as part of the memorial itself. So the action that we're asking for the council this evening is that you amend our Chapter Five of the city code to allow the city to erect the memorial itself and to contribute funds towards doing that. By state statute, in order to do that, you have to have a public hearing, and so that's what we are here for tonight. So the purpose of the public hearing is just to hear from folks, what they, any input they may have related to the amendment and the city's participation in this. And then, once you have the public hearing, is to act on that ordinance, and then item 4.2 is, is the resolution for the budget transfer, allowing those funds to go towards the project. So I will stop there and just see if you have any questions before we open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. One question that I want to be sure that I'm able to ask, and we, in the past, this body has not contributed to this particular memorial, regardless of my opinions about being for, against this, but my question is in terms of, in terms of how you feel, manager, with respect to all the other expenses we have coming and how this is, fits in with that. I know this would be more germane for 4.2, but I have to ask this question now before we get to that, to that portion of it. I just want to be sure that, you know, given all the other items we have coming forward, that, you know, the city manager feels confident from a budgetary standpoint that we're in a position to be able to, to handle that with this additional expense.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, first of all, from a budget capacity perspective, I'm, I'm confident this amount fits in with the resources we have available. Our strategic priorities fund is in the neighborhood of about a $5 million balance right now, and, you know, we map out the anticipated expenditures and revenue within the strategic priorities fund. That's always up to change from the city council. This is a change, and I'm confident in what that fund looks like for the next several years. To your second question, I, I have, I've shared this with you. I've always assumed that there may come a point during this process that if the, if the project team that's been raising the money and moving this forward was not able to get all the way there, that there may be an ask coming back to the city to try and be that last dollar in. So this is not a surprise, I don't think. I think the surprise is just the additional cost that's related to having to relocate it on the site, and because of the issues and, and the timing of when that happened, I think it's appropriate that the city assist with the expenses there because it's much more than what the project team had anticipated. So I'm, I'm comfortable that what we are doing here is in good faith with Bloomington Remembers Veterans. It's consistent with the work we've been doing with them over the last six, seven years, and that the strategic priorities fund is more than able to take it on.
And, and finally, I just want to be sure, and thank you for that, quite comprehensive, this would get it done, or would there be any chance that we may need to come back to have additional? There's nothing that precludes us from giving additional if we were to run into some snafu as we're working through this.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, once you adopt the ordinance here and, and identify the amount of funds that are going to be prevent, provided, according to state statute, you can only deviate from that amount by a 10% factor. So, you know, the agreement is for $250,000 towards the project. If there are cost overruns that are unanticipated, that we would be able to contribute an additional $25,000 beyond that, but it would be up to the project team at that point if there's something more than that. But I think for, you know, the parts that I think the, the city reasonably shares a responsibility for and then contributions towards the project, I'm, I'm comfortable we'd be able to make it within this amount. But that's a good point because the, the action for the strategic priorities fund is 275, not 250, because we're just thinking ahead so we don't have to come back and ask you to redo the resolution on the budget adjustment. But for the ordinance, once we set 250, then 275 is the max.
Council, additional questions of Mr. Verbrugge on this? No questions? Very well. This item is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to construct a veterans memorial on Civic Plaza. Anyone who wishes to speak, if you could please come forward. A couple of items, I'm going to need you, as you start, please state your name and so on, and be sure to sign in. You can sign in afterward. We do have the five-minute shot clock on the wall, and when we get to the end of the five minutes, I will cut you off, not because I'm mean, but because we're trying to make sure that everybody has the same amount of time to speak. And what we will do, if there are any questions directed to staff or the council, what we'll do is hold those questions until we're done with the public hearing. That gives staff a chance to, to do research if necessary or prepare the answers as, as completely as possible. So that's my, my preamble. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Tim Inkstrom. I'm with, I'm here on behalf of Post 550 Commander Dan Welsh. Post 550 is the American Legion post here in Bloomington. We do a lot to help struggling veterans here in town. Some of you may have seen my Rotary presentation a couple of years ago. I know, Dwayne, you were there, and, you know, you'd be surprised. Some years have more than others, but we use the gambling money that we raise for a lot of different things in the community, not just one cause, and I think I'm really proud of that. So the American Legion post here in Bloomington, Post 550, we support the, this ordinance and we support the new site. It might even be better on the new site. You know, I'd also like to thank tonight our Vietnam veterans, if there's any here today. Can you raise your hand? The Vietnam veterans came home, and a lot of them came home unwelcome, as you know. They decided to change America. They changed VA healthcare. They changed the way the VA healthcare takes care of veterans. They changed how society treats and welcomes veterans, and they taught America to separate the veterans from the war, from the politics that is often involved with war. And so they taught America to treat them as people who serve their nation. I am a Persian Gulf War veteran. I served in the Gulf War. I was one of the very first Americans to actually go to the sandbox, and, you know, the Vietnam veterans made sure I had a really good welcome home, and so I appreciate them for that. I'm proud to live in Bloomington. We're the fourth-largest city. You know, Eden Prairie to the west, it has a veterans memorial, and that's where they hold the Veterans Day observances. Minneapolis has one. They have a new one on the north side of the riverbank there. Richfield, as you know, has Veterans Park, and, you know, many of the communities around Minnesota have veterans memorials, and we have no veterans memorial, but it would be great because it would be a good place to hold Veterans Day observances, like other communities do. Veterans memorials are often a place for reflection. It shows that this community welcomes them. They are part of the change that was begun by our Vietnam veterans to improve the way America thinks and associates with veterans. So I humbly ask you to support this ordinance, and if you have any questions about the veterans community in Bloomington, I'd be happy to answer them at any time, and I'm always approachable. So that's all my comments for tonight. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Inkstrom. Others wishing to speak? Caitlin, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening?
Mayor, there is no one online.
Last call for anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Council, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing in item 4.1.
So moved. Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Dela Sando, to close the public hearing in item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. Council, Mr. Verbrugge talked earlier and mentioned that this, our Bloomington Remembers Veterans group has been working arduously, and I think that's a perfect word for it because I have not seen a community work, group work so hard for something positive and uplifting and certainly needed in this community as this group has. And I am deeply grateful to the work they've done, deeply grateful for them getting us to this point, this community to this point, and I think it's incumbent on us, council, to help them finish this project. I think the, as Mr. Inkstrom said, the change in venue, it might actually be better. I kind of whitehead out there on, on that eastern point, and just the, the cost of moving the site due to the utilities underneath, I think it does, it bears us a bit to help them out as much as we possibly can. But as Mr. Verbrugge said, I've always been under the impression also that ultimately the city would, would help this along and would help bring this to the finish line, and I think this is our opportunity, and I'm wholly in favor of this, and can't wait to get in the ground and ultimately cut the ribbon on this wonderful memorial. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. I share your, your same thoughts and wishes with this, but what I also want to just mention from this project is that when this had started several decades ago, the, the original ask of this was, I believe it was Vern Wilcox, who wanted to see a type of memorial, and I think what this represents is a generational, both of different council folks who have helped spearhead this forward, first with Vern. I did it for a little while. My colleagues, Jenna Carter and, and Alona De La Sando, helped to kind of bring it home today, and I'm just so excited that this would be something that would be a part of District One. Having been, I know there are other folks that are, that have been on the council and other members of the council who have veterans as a part of their family. My, my dad was a veteran, is no longer here, and the only way that we got housing was the, the fact that he was a veteran in the city here. And so what this represents, after the events of this weekend, I think that this is a real testament of that period of time that this, that this entire community, council, and those folks who have worked on this recently, how their commitment to getting the job done. And so I just want to thank you really deeply from my heart for all the hard work and all of the trials and tribulations that we've all come through to get here today, and so thank you.
Council, additional comments? Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember De La Sando. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I fully support this, appreciate all the hard work that you've put into this. I am, I think it's an appropriate use of city funds to help support this, get it to the, the bottom line. I have personally contributed to the project. That's how vested I am, and as the city manager can attest, I've long spoke privately that I think this is the better location than the other one, and I've advocated for this. So I'm actually very, actually excited to see it there because I think it will be something that people that come into the community at that location see. It'll be very prominent to see that our, that this community supports our veterans, and my father served in Vietnam. My, two of my uncles have Purple Hearts from Vietnam, so thank you for your service. Very much appreciated. It's the least we can do to show our support.
Councilmember De La Sando.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank you all. I love working with you folks, and it's been a privilege to try to navigate with you over the last couple of years to try to get this to the, this point. So congratulations on this moment in time. I think, you know, by this time next year, we'll be celebrating, which will be very exciting if we can get this done today, which is great. I look forward to that very, very much. I also just want to, you know, tell folks in the audience and online that while we don't raise money on behalf of anything, you can support this. So the, the fact is that they've worked really, really hard. They're over six, what, they're over 60, 70% funded at this point. Like, they're really, really close, but you can make a difference, and so I would encourage you, if you have a, if you want to do a really unique thing in honoring a veteran in your family or in your friend group, this is one of those. It's a very cool project, and it, it has some unique aspects to it that you probably won't see anywhere else. So unless anybody else has anything, I'd be thrilled to move the item.
I, I will come back to you, Councilmember De La Sando.
That's okay. Unless, unless Councilmember Carter does want to. Either way.
I'm happy to second it, too. Yes, I just wanted to echo the sentiments that have already been spoken, and just want to thank you all for all of your really hard work. I know that it hasn't been an easy road. I know there's been some twists and turns and bumps along the way, and so thank you for your persistence and your passion. Obviously, this is an issue that is personal to many of us. Both my parents were active duty for 20 years. My dad served in the Gulf War. My mom has passed away, and so to have a place in Bloomington where we can go and express our gratitude and remember all, everything that has been done in our country's history to make us who we are today. So you want me to make the motion? All right. I guess I got to find it, too, though. All right. So I would move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the city code related to a memorial for veterans on city property.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember De La Sando, to approve an ordinance amending- an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the City Code related to a memorial for veterans on city of Bloomington property. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, and thank you all. And as others have said, thank you all for your service to this community, to this country, for all that you do. And thank you at the Legion Post for sponsoring SummerFest, as you did. I just love that, and it's just, I certainly appreciate it. You're a great example of this community, so thank you all so very much. We have a second motion, and I'm looking at you, Councilmember De La Sando.
Gladly. I move to approve a resolution making alterations to the approved budget, transferring $275,000 from the 4,200 Strategic Priorities Fund to the 2,650 Veterans Memorial Special Revenue Fund in order to fund the Veterans Memorial Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember De La Sando, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the resolution transferring $275,000 to the 2,650 Veterans Memorial Special Revenue Fund in order to fund the Veterans Memorial Project. Any further council discussion on this? And this is, just so we're clear, this is, we've moved on to Item 4.2 without officially and formally calling it. I think everybody understood what we were doing here. Item 4.2, no further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero on Item 4.2. Looking forward to getting into the ground, looking forward to cutting the ribbon. And again, thanks. Thank you all very much. Well done. Moving on, counsel, Item Five is our organizational business. And we have two items under organizational business. These are study items. The first is a study item regarding Streamline Development Approvals Study. Mr. Johnson, good evening and welcome.
Hi, Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you all. I'll use the clicker here. So, this is an item that I and the planning commissioner are excited to present to you. I'm going to urge to avoid doing two things. One is using this great runway I have in front of you by, what time is it? Six thirty? I'm not usually used to being here at this time. But the second thing is, I'll try and avoid going into the weeds unless you want to go into the weeds. So, if you want more detail, if you want, some of these things can be fairly granular. Some of the topics, just let me know, and we can talk about that. So, this is just a brief agenda slide, kind of talking about the project, why it was formed, why do it, and then kind of go over 11 subprojects that we evaluated as a staff and presented to the planning commission, give you their feedback, and then we can talk about next steps and get you onto soliciting your feedback and questions and try and pin down a direction. So, in terms of background, of course, this project was added to the 2024 Planning Commission Work Plan under this category of City Code Amendments. Overall, just from a national and local context, there's been a lot of attention paid lately to ways that government can get out of the way of economic activity or housing production or a variety of different things. That's easy to say, but obviously, you want to maintain rigorous review and try and prevent nuisance and use conflicts and things like that. But there's been some national examples that have gotten a lot of attention in Silver Spring, Maryland. There was the Green Tape Program that was aimed at trying to stimulate more affordable housing production. Just recently, at the National Planning Conference, I learned about the Modern Zoning Code in Boise, Idaho. So, they've done a substantial amount of work to try and make a very complex zoning code much more easy to navigate. And then locally here, Rochester just last year passed the Unified Development Code. They're getting lauded and getting positive attention for that effort, because effectively what they've done is, I think they've eliminated a good percentage of their public hearing processes and able to get development approvals in a matter of weeks. Now, some of that is dependent on having robust and good application and rigorous internal review, but they've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the development community about that. Hopkins, Minnesota, also just adopted a complete zoning code overhaul. And then, there is some examples of this within our code. How do you streamline development? You're familiar with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. That policy has within it an expedited building permit review policy. So, you know, the city can make the process more rigorous, less rigorous, faster for things that it wants to promote. And that's kind of looking at this at a much bigger scale. That's what this project is. Just generally speaking, staff believes this project is supported by our comprehensive plan. There's a number of strategies, goals, actions that were identified in the staff report that support this work. And then, in addition, your five-year strategic plan, which you recently adopted or are still implementing, talks about equitable economic growth and some other elements that we think fit well with this effort as well. So, why do it? First of all, you want to ensure that you have a very healthy local economy. You want to make sure that people are growing and sustaining businesses in Bloomington. You know, I know some of you are fairly competitive and want Bloomington to get the most activity and the most, those kinds of things. So, that certainly is an important reason of why to pursue these types of changes. Then, of course, housing has been an ongoing and continuing subject matter, topic, that the planning commission, the HRA, the HRC, lots of groups have been focused on housing, recently the Port Authority. And basically, it's if you are able to reduce red tape or the difficulty to produce housing, more housing is going to get produced. That's not eliminating the other barriers that exist with respect to the cost and some of those other things, but it's an important element of it. So, how do we, how do you lower barriers and costs for development? So, we're thinking about it kind of in these two categories, costs and barriers. The first two numbers, those are more costs. So, reducing the time it takes, time is a cost, that's really the biggest one from the feedback I get from the development community. When you're talking about certain application types, it can take 10 weeks to get through the formal review process, and that does not include typically a month of pre-application work, a meeting with staff, having consultants prepare plans and those kinds of things. So, really, you're talking about, you know, a four- to six-month process before you have your zoning approvals in hand in some cases. The financial costs, those obviously include our application fees. There's some opportunities to reduce or eliminate some of those in certain instances, but I think the time is really the biggest one when it comes to the costs. In terms of barriers, just, you know, Bloomington, I would put it somewhat in the middle. I'm, you know, proud to think that our code is fairly legible, easy to understand in certain ways, but there are zoning codes out there that are very complex and very difficult to navigate, and the procedures almost change district to district or application type to application type. But overall, it can just make people's heads spin, especially people who are not familiar with going through entitlement process or zoning approval process. So, just increasing procedural simplicity just makes it more accessible for people. Increasing the certainty and confidence in approval, that's a big one, relates heavily to the conditional use permit item, and, you know, certainly relates to rezonings and other bigger applications, which we're not proposing to change. But that's a big one in terms of, especially for laypeople, of whether or not they're going to want to pull the lever to go forward. So, these are the four metrics. The reason why we kind of itemize these as fours, these are the things that we identified as criteria when we looked at what subprojects to study within our code. Where was the opportunities? These are the things that informed that. Back to the discussion about why do it, just from staff's perspective, we have a strong belief that streamlining development activity is positive from an equity perspective, and the reason being is the more complex, the lengthier your regulatory or approval processes are, that really favors the more resourced, the more experienced development and business people in the community. It makes it less accessible for everyone to kind of get through the door. Before I say the last bullet point, I had a conversation with the city manager about it also gives policymakers the opportunity just to do more policymaking work. If you're not having to work through development approvals at every agenda, it just gives you more oxygen and bandwidth to focus on policymaking. But finally, you can do a lot of streamlining, and that's great. But what you can't do is pair that with reducing your internal review process. It has to maintain a high level of integrity. You have to have staff who have the ability to collaborate between multiple departments and divisions to make sure that all of the elements that are there that result in successful development are there on a consistent and comprehensive way, basically. So, hopefully, that provides good background information. So, after going through and kind of developing these four criteria, we identified 11 subprojects that we wanted to study as part of this. The planning commission reviewed all 11 of these, and they had two separate study sessions on this project. And I don't intend to present all of these items to you. What I intend to do is kind of focus on the majors, major and the majors. And we've identified the majors as these projects and highlighted in yellow. We certainly can go over some of the other ones and discuss those if you have questions about them. But what we want to spend time tonight most specifically is talking about site plan review, conditional uses, the planning commission, approval of conditional use permits, planning commission as the board of adjustment, as well as the reasonable accommodation process. So, that's where our presentation is going to focus on. We certainly can talk about these other things as needed. So, the first topic I will present to you has to do with site plan review. So, most cities in Minnesota have some form of a formal site plan approval through the development application process. A few cities do not. But one important point I want to make is that whenever a site plan review is paired with another application, say a rezoning, say a conditional use permit, say something that is also bundled with it, the review always follows the most rigorous or extensive procedural pathway. So, I just want to highlight that, that, you know, not many of our larger development applications are final site and building plans by themselves. And that's what we call our site plan review, is final site and building plans. So, that's an important point to make. But site plan review is one of the areas that is a good opportunity to be able to streamline development. As I mentioned, some cities do not have a formal site plan review. Some cities have full administrative site plan review. What Bloomington has is we have an administrative component, meaning that the planning manager has the authority to approve more modest, smaller development applications for site plan review. And the rest of them, assuming that they're code compliant, go to the planning commission for their review and approval. That's assuming that there isn't another application component that requires city council approval. It also assumes that no appeal is received. I know you've had an application that was recently appealed, and hopefully, that experience will be, provide good background, thinking in terms of how this process can work. So, what are the positive benefits of site plan review? One is that it keeps the public informed. We have a public hearing notice typically. Usually, it gets mailed out to all owners within 500 feet. It gives them the opportunity to provide testimony and learn about the project and connect with staff, get their questions answered, and that's good. But as I've said, there is some costs associated with that. I'll focus mostly on the time. Administrative review takes two to three weeks. Planning commission, five to six weeks. City council, seven to nine weeks. The other point I'd make about this is that we often share this slide in Planning and Zoning Actions, the Pyramid of Discretion. This action is one of the least amounts of discretion. If an application meets code, typically, a city is, must approve it unless, you know, some extenuating circumstance exists. So, what did planning commission want to do? So, we presented two options to the planning commission. One was a full administrative site plan review, which means if an application meets code and it doesn't have any other application type associated with it, like a rezoning or something else, that that would be a staff-level approval. Some cities offer that. Most cities do not. Bloomington does not currently. The other option they reviewed was expanding the administrative approval authority. And where they ultimately landed was to follow path number two, to expand the administrative approval authority. And so, what they are recommending is that the planning manager's authority expand with regards to site plan review, to new buildings with a gross area of 10,000 square feet. It's currently 1,000. Building expansions not to exceed 25% of floor area or 20,000, and 20,000 square feet. Currently, it's 5% and 10,000. And then residential projects that add up to five new units as part of a revision to previously approved plans. So, we just had an application at the planning commission just last meeting where they converted a club room into one dwelling unit and an office. And that had to go through planning commission, public hearing and approval. There was no external additions to the building. It was just an interior renovation. Now, this, that project is exactly the kind of project, and the planning commission made this point, is that should be subject to administrative approval, assuming it meets code and addresses all the requirements that it needs to do. So, this kind of gives you two options to contemplate. The one thing I'll say, just when thinking about the options, is that some cities that have full administrative site plan review, and this is a very hard thing to assess out unless you had infinite amount of time to do research, is that some cities will tell you they have administrative site plan review, but in reality, their zoning codes are so rigorous that most people go through a PUD development application process, meaning very few applications go through administrative site plan review. And it's hard to suss that out just on the basis of looking at other city zoning codes. So, those are two options to think about, and we can return to that if need be. Here's a couple of examples of kind of what this process would look like. So, these are all projects that previously or under the current zoning code cannot be approved administratively. The Yardscapes Warehouse on West 86th Street, this is one of my first projects when I came to the city of Bloomington. This is a detached, or it's a new building, and it's a warehouse building. It meets code. It was a pretty straightforward application type. It was 6,000 square feet. The changes is contemplated or recommended by planning commission would allow this project to go administrative if it were, assuming it was code compliant. The Schneiderman's Furniture Edition, that's a more recent one. That was a 4,000-square-foot addition. That's something that could be approved administratively. The Donaldson Edition, under this new proposal, again, fully code compliant, that could go administrative. We had, I remember a project, I think it was in 2017, but the Valvoline Oil Change on Lyndale did a trashroom addition, and I think it was, I want to say, 500-some square feet that had to go to a public hearing process because it represented a addition proportionally, speaking, above what the current code allows. So, these are kind of some of the costs of some of those things. And then in the bottom right corner, this is just an example of a project that was approved through final site and building plans by the planning commission. And I just share this example to kind of put some scale behind, in some cities that have full admin site plan review, you could have fairly large projects go through that process. And maybe that's positive. Maybe there's some costs to that. But some cities are going that pathway. So, getting on to the next project, so the conditional use permit process. So, the planning commission spent a lot of time on this subproject. It was a very extensive, and staff for that matter, spent a lot of time on this subproject. So, the conditional use permit process represents one of the key ways that the zoning code tries to eliminate conflicts between land uses. Some land uses carry with them certain nuisance characteristics or make them, you know, have certain considerations that warrant further scrutiny or create some, or kind of historically create problems when located adjacent to other more sensitive uses, say residential, places of assembly, schools, whatever the case may be. And the conditional use permit process is a means authorized by state statute to have a hearing and have more scrutiny and discretion in your decision-making process than just a permitted use. So, that's the alternative, is a permitted use. And there's prohibited, I suppose, too. But one thing I want to make clear about this project is that this evaluation does not make any uses in the Bloomington zoning code allowed in a zoning district where it's currently not. What this, what this study is strictly limited to is evaluating uses that are currently conditional in order to make them permitted in some, on some level. And I say "on some level" because we created this extensive matrix. It had all of, and I'll show you an example of it, but it had staff recommendations for all of the specific uses. And some of them were not as simple as just making them conditional, the permitted. Some of them had to do with either deleting a use or keeping a limited designation in certain districts. So, that's all within that matrix, and I'll get to that in a minute. But so, what are the strengths of the conditional use permit process? So, as I mentioned, greater discretion in your decision-making. It's not infinite. It's not as much as a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment where you're really legislating in effect. It's a form of legislating. But you can add conditions of approval to the, to the development so long as they're not arbitrary and capricious. I mean, there has to be some nexus between the condition that you're adding in order to eliminate the perceived nuisance or whatever the case may be. There is a public hearing process, so people get notified. That's one of the values of a conditional use permit process. The final point, correction of violation. So, this has not occurred in my time here, but theoretically, some cities do pursue this. Sometimes, cities will remove or suspend a used conditional use permit. We have a lot of tools in our code enforcement toolbox to utilize before we get to something like that. And so, this is something that hasn't happened in my time. I don't think it- And so this is something that hasn't happened in my time. I don't think it happens. Glenn is here, too. He can speak to even a longer institutional view or more institutional knowledge. But this isn't something that occurs very often. It just doesn't get to that point typically. But I mean, suffice worth noting it, I suppose. The weaknesses of this is that it creates greater uncertainty in terms of whether pursue a project. And by that, you know, most often the case where people are unaware of that a conditional use permit is required is when they're trying to become a tenant in an existing building. Very often it's not the case that we're building a new building, but they need a CUP and they're kind of taken by surprise and that there's there's not as much barriers for people for people like that. It's usually a business trying to go in an existing building, like, oh, I need a conditional use permit. I didn't know that. And that can create, you know, quite a significant delay or some just walk and it just doesn't work. So that uncertainty component, two is the time I mentioned, you know, anywhere between six to eight weeks and that's typically for PC. If it's going on to CC, it's a longer process. And then the financial cost associated with it. So they still have to create good plans prepared by architects and engineers in some cases in those things, but typically there is some soft costs associated with preparing development application going through the process. Sometimes legal representation or other representation is included in that. So it's hard to pin down necessarily, but there's typically some soft costs associated with going through this process. Okay, so now getting on to the main event of our planning commission lengthy process here. So the Bloomington zoning code has 112 uses designated as conditional. And so what the evaluation really aimed to do was to determine with fresh eyes whether or not it's appropriate to designate all 112 of these uses as conditional. It's a tool authorized under state statute, as I said, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't also utilize some discretion in terms of where you designate uses as conditional. And so we reviewed all 112. A couple things I'll note that are both kind of on the screen, but not on the screen is that there's always complexity in knowing where the use is allowed, what zoning districts it's allowed in. That's really essential to evaluating it. Understanding the use definition is also really important. Sometimes there's restrictions or limitations within the definition of a use and I can give you examples if you want. And then third, finally, not reflected on this screen is that some uses are subject to licensing requirements. So they have to get an annual license. There's typically conditions or requirements that have to be met in the licensing section. It's not reflected in the zoning code. That's not reflected in here. But it does inform some of staff's recommendations. I would say that. Okay, so how did we go about evaluating 112 of these uses? We did. We did look at the things I just mentioned. But the main things that we did is we determined, and that's what's within the matrix and color coded. Hopefully that's helpful. But we wanted to see which of these uses have use based standards. So a lot of the uses that were designated as conditional, excuse me, they were designated as such before the city adopted specific use standards in the zoning code, which use standards are primarily intended to eliminate some of the issues associated with nuisance. So many of these uses were restaurant is a good example. Previously, all restaurants had to get a conditional use permit in Bloomington. Since that time, use standards have been adopted and it addresses many of the issues that do arise with restaurant uses. So we did evaluate whether all these uses have use standards or not. If it has use standards, that might be a reason to remove that conditional use permit requirement. If not, maybe don't do that. It depends on the situation. The other thing is we looked at all the uses that are the potential for nuisance. So what does nuisance mean? It means a lot of different things. Can mean odor, noise, dust, glare, light, traffic, industrial activities. It can mean a lot of different things for a lot of different land uses, but basically what we tried to do and it was some of the more tenured staff in the planning division, just anecdotally through our experience in the Bloomington setting, trying to evaluate all these different uses for what is the potential for nuisance. And then finally, what is the complexity of these uses? Some uses are very simple and straightforward. Everyone knows what a restaurant is, as I mentioned. University, more complex, a lot more different activities, day, night. There's a much wider range of things that happen at kind of a multi-use campus versus kind of a single use type of business or site. And so that's another thing that we looked at with some of these recommendations is how complex is the use? So we did that for all 112 of these. We had several hours of staff discussion about them, maybe more than we probably should have. But we arrived at a recommendation with all 112 of these and staff recommended that 57 of these uses be changed to permitted on some level. So that's almost half. The planning commission did a very similar line by line. I would say they didn't discuss every single one, but they wanted to go through this in a very granular way of reviewing every single one of these uses. And they agreed with staff's recommendation, but for 12 of the 57. So the recommendation put forth for you tonight by the planning commission is to designate 45 of these 112 uses that currently require conditional use permit in Bloomington to become permitted uses. Now, what I didn't, maybe I should have mentioned this before. I meant to, but what does it mean if it's a permitted use? They still have to get a building permit. They still go through an internal staff review that's multi-department. All different departments are included in the building permit review. And one of the items we're not talking about tonight is clarifying expanded authority for this group called Development Review Committee. Some of you are familiar with DRC. It's been a longstanding internal staff entity that reviews all types of development applications. One of the code amendments we would recommend is clarifying that DRC has the ability and the authority to review building permits for change of use scenarios for this very reason. You get a complex change of use while that might may no longer require conditional use permit and according to the zoning code, it still does warrant assembling the internal staff review group in order to give the applicant a full and robust reporting on what they have to do to get their building permit. I think it's just as much a value to the applicant as it is to the staff in terms of coordinating the review process. So that was a lot of talking on in that weeds direction. So sorry, I should have advanced to the slide before. Just to reiterate, staff recommended 57. Planning commission removed 12 from that list. They were undecided on three. I will highlight those for our last question and discussion. Exhibit two highlights all of these different uses. If you have a question about a specific use, they're all numbered on the left side of the matrix. That would help us identify the item in order to explore it if there are questions. But option one, in terms of just from an action standpoint, in terms of what could inform an ordinance would be to affirm the planning commission recommendation. Option two would be to revise it. Glenn corrected me at the planning commission. I didn't learn my lesson. Option three is keep the zoning code the way it is and don't make any changes. But those are the two options as we see them. Okay, we're on the, to move things along here a little bit, we're going to group all of these sub projects as one big bulk item. And the reason that they're all connected together is that they they follow the same theme. One of the ways to streamline development, and this goes back to my point about, you know, kind of giving policymakers more oxygen to write policy, is about granting the planning commission more authority to approve applications subject to appeal. And that's the part you have to underline in bold face and bold font is subject to appeal. If you get approval from the planning commission, which is most often the case, I know you recently saw an appeal, but that is not the most often case. That's the atypical case. If you do not have to go to city council to get approval, that typically shaves or removes two to three weeks of time from the approval process. So that's really the number one streamlining that you're gaining in going to that. And so all of these sub projects, in addition to reduced application fees, but all of these sub projects on different levels have to do with the idea of granting the planning commission more approval authority subject to appeal. So project number six and project number eight are the ones I want to spend most of my time. I think they're the most impactful ones. But project number six, as you know, as you've seen, there are some conditional use permits that come to the city council for review and approval. The the public hearing is still held at the planning commission and they make a recommendation to you and then that action is typically placed on your consent agenda and sometimes it's pulled to discuss, sometimes not. But suffice to say that some, most often than not, those kind of remain on the consent agenda. There's 22 of these conditional uses that have to come to city council for review and approval. There's two interim uses. So how did we get to that structure? That's a fair question. Previously, the city council approved all conditional use permits in Bloomington. And then 2009, when this last major procedural overhaul type of item happened, the planning commission was granted the authority to approve all of them except for those 22. I mean, not not the number 22, but all of those, but I don't know what the precise number was, but over the years since then, a few uses, like data center and a few others have been added to that list for the desire to get more public scrutiny on those use types. So one of the things you can do, shorten the the time it takes for the entitlements, which is to grant all the grant the approval authority for those 22 items and the two interim uses to the planning commission. One thing I didn't say at the jump, forgive me, I'm going a little out of order tonight, is that anyone can appeal a action from the planning commission. The public can appeal, the applicant can appeal, you can appeal. You're a member of the public. So whatever action the planning commission takes, I want to stress very much, and it's critically important for people to understand that there is always an additional pathway to get the application before the city council for final dispensation or final action. Yeah. So I have a slide showing what those 22 uses are if you want to review them in detail, but I'll, if it's okay, I'll talk about variances next. So under state law, state statute creates a board of appeals and adjustment. Most cities have their city council serve as the board of appeals and adjustment. But state law does allow the creation of a separate board of appeals and adjustment. Minneapolis has a separate board of appeals and adjustment. Some other larger cities do that. Or you can grant the authority to the planning commission to serve in that capacity. We did have legal review this and the good thing about that is that that too also, even though the planning commission is designated as that board, state statute does allow for that action to be appealed to the higher governing body in that case as well. So even if you were to follow that recommendation or that approach, the same thing that I was saying about conditional use permits and final site and building plans where there's this appeal pathway that exists, that also could exist for variances as well. Two of our neighboring cities have this exact structure. Edina and Nene Prairie both have their planning commission serve as their board of appeals and adjustment with the option or opportunity to appeal to the city council, either the applicant or a member of the public or anyone really. Yeah, so similar to my comment about the conditional use permit, we don't see a lot of appeals. And most often this is maybe anecdotal, but most often when I see variances on your agendas, I think they're placed on consent for the most part, and typically they get approved as part of the consent agenda. And if there's some additional discussion that's needed to be had, I think that's a good opportunity to appeal the planning commission action by any party. So the rest of the items, final development plans with no flexibility, tent extensions, certificates of appropriateness. Number nine and 10 don't come up very often. Those are more code cleanups from our perspective. I'm happy to talk about them if there's questions. But planning commission reviewed these in earnest and they spent a lot of time talking about it. And their recommendation was that they were ready for the task or up to the task of taking this on if if supported by the city council. So yeah, we thought the best to kind of present these as a grouping. The final one was added a little bit later in the process, but Bloomington does not have, we have a reasonable accommodation policy and there's a way to apply for reasonable accommodations of different kinds. But we don't have a formal policy in our zoning code for reasonable accommodation. Reasonable accommodation has to do with ensuring appropriate access to city services and housing according to the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Amendments of 1988. And so we did a little bit of research and this actually was generated from a question from the public recently. So thank you to the public for always keeping us going back to the statutes and codes and trying to come up with a better way. But basically what Kevintoski and the legal department found is that some cities do have a reasonable accommodation approval within their city code broadly or their zoning code. And what that would allow to happen is to create some form of administrative approval that would address a reasonable accommodation related to a certified disability. And the reason why that could be applicable or helpful just from a streamlining perspective, but just maybe a continuous or process improvement standpoint is that currently in Bloomington, the way to get relief from a zoning regulation, if you're getting granting relief related to reasonable accommodation is to get a variance. Now, variance is not a good tool to do that. One, the findings don't align at all with reasonable accommodation. And two, variance is typically run with the land. It's not as if not the the owner or the resident. Now, the city has in the past established some sunset conditions on some of those variance applications. But frankly, it's just not the best process or tool in alignment with reasonable accommodation. So planning commission was very supportive of this item as well. So in terms of next steps, we want to collect your feedback tonight, but what the Matt, what the process would look like here coming forward would be to draft an ordinance following your recommendations and bringing it to a public hearing, hopefully in late August or September at the latest, and then schedule city council public hearings to present the planning commission recommendation of that ordinance, late September or October. So with that, I will just ask these kind of discussion, key decision point questions of the key question. Number one is the planning commission recommendations. Do you concur with all of the planning commission recommendations on these sub projects? Or do you do you want to revise the direction on any particular sub project? And then key question number two is that the planning commission specifically requested the council review three uses cemetery, restaurant with outdoor rooftop seating. We've had multiple applications of that recently. And city licensed congregant living facility serving five or more persons. So the the planning commission recommendation as presented to you in this document includes making these permitted uses while they currently require a conditional use permit. I think the cemetery one and the congregant living one are probably more just straightforward, but at the outdoor or rooftop seating at a restaurant, that one, there was more robust discussion about how to maybe adopt performance standards that would eliminate some of the noise concerns of outdoor dining near residential. And, you know, we can certainly talk about that, but the planning commission asked us to get your specific feedback on those three. But question number one is probably the big one. Sorry, Mayor, I've been talking too long. Forgive me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thanks for that comprehensive overview. And I thank the planning commission also for their work on the 112 that issues that they went through. God bless them for doing that. For, well done by them. The, so we got the the main questions in front of this. I just want to open it up first, any council to the council for any just general questions or clarifying questions as to what we heard today. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things I'm just trying to understand from an overall kind of standpoint is, you know, because part of this, you know, if we're bringing internally, how does the the public kind of learn about it in terms of our transparency? You know, we used to have a, you know, help me understand a little bit about what, you know, how that is handled, you know, if these, some of these items go before the DRC, that's, you know, that's kind of internal. And then respect for for those folks who, you know, maybe find themselves in the minority, how is that kind of handled as these as these events kind of come forward? I know you can do it through an appeal, but through the public hearing process, there seems to be a more even kind of way for you to have those comments elicited earlier on. So I'm just, I'm curious about about those pieces. And then I'll stop there and I'll ask my next question after that. I just got.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I mean, I don't think it's good for staff to beat around the bush on that. I think that the public notification component, particularly with the conditional use permit piece and then expanding administrative approval authority, there's less public notification. There's no way around that. There's no way to kind of sugarcoat that side of it. The one thing I would say about that is that while public notification is good just from a building confidence and understanding what's the mechanics of what's happening, it can also be frustrating for some members of the public to learn that particularly on code complying applications, there's very limited discretion to make changes within some of those applications. That's not a reason not to do it. I'm just kind of sharing that anecdotal viewpoint of what we what we do learn. There is some value from a staff perspective, too, of kind of learning some of that local knowledge. There's, I'm not going to dismiss that either. That's important. But I think what what the balance this tries, that what this, what these recommendations, the balance that it tries to thread or the what it's trying to present to you is really identifying those uses that have a lot less history or limited examples of creating nuisance characteristics for. characteristics for neighboring properties, or have less, lesser development impacts.
And these things could be reversed at some point in time, too, in the future, right?
They certainly can be reversed at any point.
So, then, just a couple of their questions real quick, as we get to the other, other portions here. In terms of the Planning Commission composition, are we locked into a, you know, there are terms of being three, is it three, it's all a maximum of six years with that? Is that state law that, that does that for us? Or, just in terms of all these items kind of coming before the Planning Commission, that level of experience, that type of thing is something I have a concern around. Is that, is that state ordinance that requires that, or is that just something that we've done?
Mr. Verbrugge and Ms. Manderscheid, our term limits within our Planning Commission. And, Mr. Johnson, do you know off the top of your head, or either of you two?
I'll defer to the bosses first, for sure.
Mayor members, we just had a conversation about this last Tuesday, and I'm trying to remember, our city code specifically talks about several commissions. I don't think that Planning Commission term limits are in there, but I'm going to double check.
We could always come back to it later, too. We do have some type of limit, I thought.
Yeah, we do.
Glenn's getting excited.
Two, three-year terms.
Three-year terms, yes.
Consecutively.
Here comes Glenn.
It is in the city code.
Ms. Markergard, good evening, welcome.
Mayor Bushy, just confirming that the city code does have a term limits on Planning Commission, and it's two, three-year terms.
Yeah, that's just a city requirement, that's not a state requirement.
It's not statutory.
Okay, all right. That's just one question I had. And then, the last thing, when you had presented the, the planning appeals process, that there was a possibility of going from the Planning Commission to a, an appeals board, if that were to happen, then is that it, or would it then also go, could it also then come back to the city council? Or is that kind of it? Can you lock it off at the Board of Appeals if you went down that process?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, so statute does authorize an additional appeal opportunity to the city council, even, even if you designate the Planning Commission as the Board of Appeals.
Or a separate Board of Appeals?
Or a separate, yes.
So, it could be appealed three times?
Well, if you designate a Board of Appeals and Adjustment, they would hear a variance. For example, the Planning Commission would not serve in that capacity.
At all, okay.
Right.
Okay.
So, well, I mean, procedurally, I think state law would authorize you to create any of those opportunities, but where I've seen there be a separate Board of Appeals, they're holding the public hearing and they're taking a final action on it that can be appealed or cannot be appealed under state law.
Okay, so there'd be.
The Planning Commission is not.
Not a part of it. Okay, thanks for clarifying that, because I was confused on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions broadly overall, and then I have questions about specific items, recommendations. I'll wait on those. Is that what you're looking for? Okay. Will this increase the workload for the Planning Commission, or are these things that they already hear and then also redundantly come to the city council?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we would, we would not anticipate it increased their workload, we would increase it, decrease their development review responsibilities. They, you know, they've, they've recently anecdotally said to us that they wish they had more time policymaking for study sessions and items like this. So, no, it would not increase it, it would be likely to decrease it somewhat. It's hard to measure, guess exactly how much.
That's fine. We're not just putting a undue burden on them, I just want to make sure. Sometimes, when there are things that are, maybe there's a bit more conversation on them in the community, you know, we have received recommendations from the Planning Commission, and we, we have disagreed with them. And one of the things that I've always talked about is the Planning Commission has the rules, and they kind of, their charge is follow these rules as best you can, and tell us what you think based on those rules. The city council, because it has a little bit more authority, can maybe go a little bit beyond those. We don't have complete authority, and, you know, you talked about your pyramid, but does this change anything in terms of that relationship? Do they get a little bit more discretion to take a look at these items similar to what the council generally would have?
Yeah, and I mean, I welcome Melissa and, or the city attorney and city manager's perspective on this in addition to what I'll say, but actually, the, the discretion is the same, whether it be the Planning Commission and the city council. You're both tasked with ma, making a set of findings on a development application. The perspective by which you evaluate the project according to the findings might be slightly different. You know, you have budget, and you have a lot of other elements that the Planning Commission does not. So, I don't think that the discretion is different, I think that the perspective of how you evaluate the project according to the findings might be slightly different. That's how I would answer that question.
Mayor members, yeah, I, I guess I probably largely agree with that response. The only thing, two things come to mind. One is, when the city council is acting like a Board of Appeals, the, the discretion might be a little bit different than when the Planning Commission is acting in that capacity. The other thing I think about is that the law requires the exhaustion of administrative remedies, and that means that you can't go to the courts until you have gone through all the process at the local level. So, if we create more process, then, I don't know if that has a negative or a positive impact on the overall experience, but the more process we create, the more process people would need to go through before they get to the courts.
And everyone wants to be in court. My last question, just on the overall part of this, is what would happen in the event that Planning Commission and planning staff disagreed, which we've seen before? Would that, or is that something that we could make automatically go as an appeal, per se, to the city council to resolve that dispute between staff and, and commission?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, theoretically, you could create a procedure that does that, although I would like city attorney's viewpoint on that. At the same time, what I would say is that we as staff are certainly the first line of review of your city code, and certainly we're knowledgeable in it. But I don't think we put ourselves on the same level as the Planning Commission from a, what recommendation we're making. It's our duty to, we can identify where we might have disagreed in our initial recommendation, that's all in the record. But it's our duty to present the Planning Commission recommendation to you. So, I don't know if that was what you were looking for, answered the question directly, but I don't know about, under statute, if.
Mayor members, I guess, one thing you could do is say where the Planning Commission's decision or act is inconsistent with the staff recommendation, then it would come to council automatically. That seems to me like it would be a little bit easier to manage than potentially having something that would seem like a final opinion or a final act happening at the same time as the council could take action on it. You wouldn't want two simultaneous things happening with different levels of, that seems like it would create ambiguity. So, off the cuff, you know, that would, the first thing I was talking about seems like it would be manageable to be drafted in.
And the first is along the lines that I had been thinking.
The first would be more like.
It was a recommendation, it was disapproved, or something along those lines.
Yeah, or just different, I guess.
Yeah, and then that would go, okay, we, we need, we need someone else to make a final decision on this.
Mayor, if I may add to that, just because it's on that topic, one clarifying point is that if there's ever a situation where the Planning Commission is tied 3-3, which sometimes happens, those automatically go to the city council.
Councilmember Muah.
No, Councilmember Nelson pretty much covered off what I had.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Mr. Johnson, as always. So, I, I believe, I think it's in your slides, or maybe I read it in the packet, but there were, there were a few things that you all decided not to review. And I think, do I, did you actually have it in a slide?
Have it in.
I know, I think I read it in the report. One of them is something I'm, I'm specifically interested in, because I think it might get to the heart of maybe what I was expecting you all might be doing, and maybe it's not in here because you chose not to do it. So, this thing called conformance triggers related to significant redevelopment and change of use. And it says, other projects evaluated but not recommended, and it's in that section.
Yep, I got you.
So, based on some, some specific complaints that I've actually heard over the last couple of years, I am thinking that those conformance triggers are the things that were problematic for those folks. So, for example, I'm, I'm going to make up scenarios that are related to the things I've been thinking about. For example, you mentioned a change of use, right? This is a, this is a, an environment that used to have a coffee shop in it, and now somebody wants to put a full-blown restaurant in that. And it triggers a number of conformance requirements, as I understand it, because restaurants have different conformance requirements to, to that. Or a, a significant development. So, for example, you know, Europolis was there, and then because of what they were doing, they triggered a bunch of conformance requirements, and now they're doing a bunch of extra work because of those conformance requirements, right? Where is, I'm assuming that that's what that meant, this conformance triggers related to significant redevelopment? And if that's true, why did you choose not to address those?
Yeah, thank you.
Or, or do I have that wrong, and that's not what that is?
No, you're on the right track. Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro, the reason that we did not pursue them is that actually what we found is that in the instances of most development scenarios, which, most of the code, trash is a big one, and so, that one comes up a lot. And that is part of another project on the Planning Commission work plan, which we'll bring to you later this year. But, the reason that we didn't pursue it is that in most cases, what we're seeing, what that section really is most focused on is additions at 25% or more of the floor area, so it's expansions. This typically, in most cases, is significant development. The other scenario where we get change of use, conformance, is sometimes associated with a conditional use permit. But that's all, that's fundamentally tied to the underlying standard in the zoning code. It's not just driven by the CUP process. Sidewalks are an example of that. If you have a conditional use permit, if there's a use that is, that is going to generate more pedestrian activity, we use the conditional use permit process in order to get a sidewalk connection to the building, something that's come up at various CUPs. But that exists in the code with or without a conditional use permit. It actually is just listed as change of use. So, I'm not doing a great job explaining why we didn't pursue it. I think the reason that we didn't pursue it is that after evaluating the list, we found that most of the things were positive and should remain in the code. And some of these other things, I think we can tackle through specific ordinances that change those fundamental standards, not the, the triggers component, if that makes sense.
It does. So, so I, I'll kind of take my, I'll think about it this way, and you tell me if I have it wrong, but in my, and, 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 Mr. Mayor, I, I just, this is more of a general concept, and I think we'll get the specifics about it in, as we go along. But if we take the 45 recommendations and remove them to planned use, we eliminate some of the CUP issues that we were, that might have triggered some of those conformance requirements anyway. So, there is a streamlining there. The second part is, there's other work happening with the Planning Commission that is addressing some of our specific complaints, issues, trash and other things that are coming later. And so, maybe it's after those, these two things are done, that I should worry if we've addressed the things that I've been hoping we would address or not. Is that a fair sum up?
Mayor, I think that's a fair, and Councilmember Alessandro, I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
Situation.
All right. So, the only other question I have was related and similar to the question that Councilmember Nelson asked, was the Planning Commission, it feels to me like the Planning Commission's workload, while it wouldn't get bigger necessarily, it might actually get more burdensome, because we are shifting a lot of the public hearing. A lot of people don't come to the Planning Commission hearing, they wait for, they wait for the city council member packet to be published, and then they come to the public hearing, right? And I worry that we're either going to, like, give the, give the public not that thing, or we're going to push all that activity to the Planning Commission and make that burdensome. I, I'm not sure I'm, I know either way what the right answer is, because ultimately, whether it, number one, it's going to happen, and number two, if it happens there and it doesn't happen here, it happens sooner, which is what we're trying to do in terms of streamlining the process. It's just that those are appointed members of a commission and not, you know, elected officials obligated to the public who are going to be getting, if I may suggest, both barrels of, of the public, potentially, in some cases. And so, how, how was that conversation with the Planning Commission, and what, what did they feel comfortable doing? Likewise, are we comfortable, and this is a rhetorical question right now, pushing that burden onto them?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro, so I brought this slide up again, this is a list of applications that talks about granting them more authority. Right now, the only two items on this list that they don't already hold a public hearing and make a recommendation about is the tent extensions and the certificates of appropriateness. So, variances, which sometimes can be controversial, or conditional use permits at times, sometimes final site and building plans. You know, we had a multifamily building over in Penn Avenue, and there was a few neighbors that weren't, weren't thrilled about it. The Planning Commission made, well, never mind, that's a bad example, that's not true. That was fine, that was planned development, forgive me. The point is, is that they did not identify this as a concern on their part, because, procedurally speaking, there is always an appeal mechanism to the city council for any application that raises further scrutiny or additional, is subject to additional scrutiny, and it might be scrutiny coming from the city council in some cases, and that's okay. The point is, is that any member, any actor within the system has the ability to appeal this action to the, to the higher governing body, which is you, who are their elected representatives. And so, they did not register a concern about that.
Okay, fair enough. I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you are thinking about that, but I, you know, I'm not, having been to a few planning commissions and watching them on tape, you know, it, it's an open question about the rigor associated with reg, handling public hearings, and I don't know if we train our board chairs and things like that in some of those items and everything, but I think we would have to up, up the ante there, because, you know, we're talking about them taking your function, like, in a lot of cases that they don't today. So, it's, I'm not necessarily opposed or for or against it at this point, I just wanted to address it in case we had some other administrative work we needed to do in order to bolster their ability to absorb that.
I think that's a good point, Councilmember, thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Rebus, then Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Rebus.
I, I think I'm going to ask the same question everybody's asking without all the fancy words, right? So, what you're trying to do by, by streamlining this whole thing is avoiding the city council involvement in some of the decisions that we are involved at, at the moment, right? For instance, the variations, variances, I mean, if somebody wants to build a, something comes to mind right now, that I just got an email, person trying to have an extension of a bigger garage than the square footage of his house. So, we wouldn't get involved in that, it would be just left to the Planning Commission's criteria to decide whether that is allowed or not, with that, the city council's involvement, right?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Rebus, so, right now, the council is involved. Typically, the Planning Commission recommendation is put on the consent agenda. What these changes would propose is that the Planning Commission decision is final, but for, unless an appeal is submitted by the public. So, that's the key. It does, this, this, the system doesn't really work by, you know, by your description of wanting to avoid the city council or kind of dispense with that part of the review. It's this appeal mechanism that really is essential, because it ensures that that pathway is always available to everyone.
So, but what I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm understanding is, based on what I've been hearing, is that the council will be completely out of that, it would be the Planning Commission deciding, making those decisions for, for these specific changes, right? If a Planning Commission decides that whoever is building, whatever the case may be, like I said, I just wanted to get to the point instead of going around with all the technicalities. It would be the Planning Commission deciding that with that, with the possibility of an appeal, of course, right? But once it's been decided, I mean, it is, the extreme line is, the purpose of the streamlining is to make this more effective quicker, in other words, right? Somebody applies for a permit, they get it quicker because the Planning Commission decides without having a, a meeting with us, or a public hearing, right? That's, is that the purpose?
The Planning Committee, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Rebus, the Planning Commission holds a public hearing as well. So, it's not, I mean, for these applications that you're talking about, like variances or conditional use permits, they do hold a public hearing. And I, I think it's also important to say that a number of the, the largest applications, this, this study does not talk about rezoning or comprehensive plan amendments or plan developments, so preliminary and final development plans. Most of the largest developments that come through the planning office and go through the Planning Commission have to be a recommendation of the city council, because only the city council has the authority to approve those, and they're required to hold a second public hearing. So, there's two public hearings in the case of rezoning or comp plan. But yes, this study does include recommendations around shortening the process, granting more authority to the Planning Commission, but not circumventing the possibility of city council review by allowing that appeal pathway.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just two follow-ups to some stuff I heard. The notice requirements for a Planning Commission public hearing are the same as what they would be for a city council. So there'd be the radius around the project, the posting in the paper, it's on our website, so none of that changes. People would, that are going to be directly impacted will be notified, correct?
Mayor, that's, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct. The boundary is the same, and the procedure is the same.
Okay. Second question I have is, was there any consideration, and it may be completely not possible, of if someone is likely to appeal, having just a preemptive appeal and skipping Planning Commission, going straight to city council? We all, you know, went to the school project, and I think we all knew it was coming here, you know? I see some concerns about it, because of, you know, building the record, and we have to have that record in order to make decisions on, and I know a lot of that is built there. But from streamlining, as well as public engagement and input, you know, if there was a project that was like that, that people said, you know, no, this really should be, I mean, is it possible to skip one of the meetings, just preemptively appeal?
I welcome the city attorney to correct me if she thinks I'm off track here, but I don't believe that that's procedurally possible. And the reason being is that they, they have to take a formal action in order for, or appeal to exist in the first place. They certainly, you know, a member of the public, or staff, or the Planning Commission themselves can certainly, from a notification standpoint or a public notice, or just public information, can state that we anticipate this action to be appealed shortly after we take action. But I don't think procedurally, you could skip one of those bodies' reviews.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go back to the questions that you had placed up, because I wanted to comment on those? So I can get this part of it, don't say, correct the point. So I guess what I would say, with regard to all of what's placed before us here, is that, you know, this is really a compelling conversation, you know, kind of a trade-off between the administrative work that this council has traditionally done, with a greater role with around the concept or idea around doing more policy work, which would give us that opportunity as a, you know, as a, as a council, to really kind of look at some of those higher-level considerations. And, you know, with that being said, I do think there are a couple of things that I am, as a council member, concerned about, but I just think because of our past practice, that shouldn't govern us to kind of continue doing what we've been doing. I think that, you know, hey, staff has brought forth 57, and I, you know, I think that, you know, certainly I trust our Planning Commission, if they say just do with the 45, to be a little more cautious, but we could always roll back some of those, those other items. Now, just for example, I'm a little nervous about outdoor patios, in terms of what that looks like, but you know what, over time, I've begun to understand that we really haven't had those issues, and the standards that we've kind of put in place, and we can put more of those in there to get that under control. And so my two concerns with this is, I think the current structure of our Planning Commission, the composition, and, you know, Councilmember Loma DeLisandro talked about this, you know, in terms of their competency, their tenure, that'd be something I'd want to have a, have a look at, if we're going to go all the way down this process. Maybe we need to look at the different terms, you know, the training that's there, you know, who appoints it, how we appoint it, how long is it. So those are things I want to, would want to look at. And then the secondary piece that is probably more concerning to me is the transparency and the public notification portion of it. I don't, and I've heard over the years, we've had problems with that, so I'm not saying we need to keep what we have today, I'm not saying that at all. But I think as we, if we look to go down this process, I would look to try to figure out a way in which we can enhance that notification and that transparency, especially those items that would be now housed internally. You know, there's lots of skepticism of the administrative state that's out there from certain part of the public, that trust factor, and I wouldn't want us to get wrapped up into some of those items, and so I'd want to figure out new, novel ways of doing kind of both things around notification and transparency. But say for those two things, and my, my initial concern about the outside patios, which I support and love, I spend lots of time on those things in Bloomington, I think this is a great, bold, new process that staff has put forward, and I'm willing to even go as far as the 57 to see what that looks like, because we can roll it back. So I really support what staff has brought forward. I think this is kind of a, you know, it's a, it's a brand-new day in Bloomington, and if we want to compete from a development standpoint, we really need to be on the cutting edge of, in terms of how we look at development, Mayor. And so I think this is a way in which to kind of, kind of do that. These other two items can be addressed by making this change, and then addressing it as we go, to make it a more perfect policy. But as far as what I see here today, I can support.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll agree with your, your statement about making sure that our, our Planning Commission is up to the task, and they have been in the past. They're well-trained, and they do a very good job. And I will point out that any items that come before the city council, if there's a new city council member who has been recently elected, they don't necessarily have that experience either, and that's where the experience of the rest of the body, and the staff guidance, and the learning curve comes into play there, so. Council, additional, additional general questions, and if you want to dig into the specifics, we can dig into the specifics, too. Councilmember Nelson's ready for the specifics. Councilmember Nelson?
All right, thank you. So looking at item, I think it was two, am I correct in understanding that there were two options presented? One was an administrative path, and one was increasing the amount of projects that would go through the administrative path, but not fully turning those over. So even if it was, you know, met, if it was over the new buildings with gross area of 10,000 square feet, that, if it was over that, even if it was completely code-compliant, that would go to Planning Commission. Okay. So my comment on that is, if it's code-compliant, administratively approve it. I mean, why, why give the false sense that we can do anything different? I mean, if it meets code, they should be able to build it. If the code's wrong, bring that information forth, and let's consider it. But I'd be in favor of the first option, that it should be administratively approved, the most simple thing for a code-compliant thing, because the reality is, it's going to get approved. I mean, and we've not approved things in the past, and we got our hand slapped by the courts, saying, you can't do that, it met the standards. So I just, I don't want to give that false impression to people, and I want to obviously streamline, I think that's great. So that's just my opinion on that one, people disagree on that. Number four, is there a reason, so we went from, it'd also include two-family homes, which are basically, you know, one-family, two-family, those have long been in zoning as, as this, kind of the same type of structure and building. Is there a reason that it didn't include up to four units, or townhomes, or other items that are under the purview, under state law, of the residential building code as opposed to the commercial building code? And would it be an opportunity to look at expanding that to everything basically covered by the residential code, as long as it was code-compliant, as a residential code? The commercial code adds a ton of complexities and differences and things like that. And that may not be something that we're ready for today, it might be something to look at later, but was there any consideration of that?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, there was. We didn't pursue that path for two reasons. One, that we wanted to limit our recommendations and scope of study to kind of tweaking existing processes and tools, not fundamentally, you know, adding new policy items to it, so that's reason number one. And the second reason is, you have another project on your work plan this year, Missing Middle Housing, that's going to look at that very exact thing. So it's just that conversation is still on the docket, it's planned to be had later this fall and into the winter, and that's where we're going to discuss those use types.
Okay. So that would be something possibly that would come back later, to say, hey, we think this is where it should go?
Definitely.
Okay, perfect. I'm totally comfortable with that. Was there any look at a goal or a process by which we would reduce the number of PUDs or PDs? Because I see those are used a lot. But I think the difficulty, in my mind, to getting there is that deals a lot more with standards, not process. Am I correct in that, and was there any discussion of how to do that? Because those seem like, in addition to the timelines that you provided, there's a lot of negotiations with the developer in that process, going through what flexibilities do they need, what is, so.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, to get to that point where you, as a city, would not be processing any plan development or similar-type tool, you would have to have a fairly permissive zoning code. You'd have very limited standards, the bulk standards would be very permissive, the setbacks would be very minimal, those kinds of things. So directionally, is that where some cities are going? Mostly, very urban cities, yes. But that being said, I looked at two things. I looked at, I thought Councilmember Loman would ask me this question, but it's you, Councilmember Nelson, that I looked in the past several years, as part of our annual work plan, we do reporting on the application types we get. Right now, for major development types, we're running, it's not this equivalent number every year, but we're pretty 50/50 on final site and building plans and plan developments, which tells me is that at least half are able to proceed through a code-compliant process, looking at the bigger picture. The second thing is not, this maybe is my own personal drum that I'm going to bang right now, but it's not that the plan development process itself is flawed, like flawed, or has to be completely dispensed, it's how cities use the tool, that I think needs to have more rigorous study or scrutiny. The plan development process should be a means to look at flexibility, if that flexibility can prove a public benefit. I personally don't think it should be a means for cities to kind of put development over, you know, to extract, to think that it's an open negotiation, that you're going to give us all these things that aren't in the code. That's just, I just exercised a little personal.
It's not just you.
Judgment there.
So, no, and I appreciate that, and I've heard very positive things about the city of Bloomington, but I also am very aware that other cities use it in the negative ways that you talk about, and they, you know, they have also had their hand slapped by the courts for that, with implications to other cities. My last question is, was there any consideration, or have you seen anywhere that, instead of taking this approach where you have uses and standards, of just having standards, and regardless of the use, you know, this is how far you have to be away from residential with this level of light, or this noise, or odors, or hazardous materials, and just, here are the standards, and it doesn't matter use, I don't care if you're going to build an industrial plant, or if you're going to, you know, build a restaurant, you have to meet all these standards. I mean, and just simplify it, people can go through and, you know, make this much more simple, and it's probably not that easy, but.
Well, no, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we do do that in some instances. We have a lighting ordinance that says that your light levels have to be low adjoining property lines adjacent to residential. So we do do that, in effect, in certain ways. We have a drive-through standards that say it has to be spaced according to residential. So we do have standards that deal with these specific elements of a site, not just the underlying fundamental use, because drive-throughs happen at multiple different use types, they happen at banks, they happen at restaurants, they happen at other things. So, but yes, use-based standards are very effective, because there are some characteristics that are very fundamental to certain uses that don't apply to other uses. These patio, you know, we've been discussing patios, where people congregate outside, those tend to be noisier than other forms of congregation outside, and tend to happen at night sometimes. So, you know, and plus, I think you want to use those tools in limited ways that solve the problem. You don't want to apply it across the board to every single land use, wherein there's just no documented problem that exists.
Yeah, thank you for the good answer, appreciate it. Council, additional questions? Just then, I have a couple just on general questions. And with the streamlining, I'm assuming there's been a study done on what the revenue impact will be? If we have fewer steps in the process, will there be, you know, fewer costs associated, which is what we're aiming for, what it will be? Understanding, of course, we don't do this to make money, but there will be, I mean, it is part of the budget, and it is part of the work that goes on.
Mayor, thank you for that question, it is a good question. We haven't done a formal study of the revenue impacts. I think that they are quite complex, on the basis that, is there potential subtractions in the amount of staff time it takes to process an application, when you're not attending multiple public hearings, for example? But at the same time, is there potential lost revenue and lesser application fees associated with some of these things? And then that's setting all the stuff aside for the really big and difficult question, is does this project have the potential to unleash additional economic activity or housing production, which has very important impacts on local revenue as well? So I think it could be done. I don't know if you would need some more smarter people than planners to do that analysis, but yeah, it's an interesting question, for sure.
Thank you. Well, something to consider and think about. And the other thing that I just jotted down, and I haven't fully formed the question, is to how it might impact the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And I'm assuming, you've had that discussion internally, how the carrots and the sticks work together with developers, and work together with the streamlined processes that relates to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance.
Yeah, Mayor, so right now, I don't think there's significant impacts to the existing Opportunity Housing Ordinance as proposed with these recommendations, and the reason I say that is that if you were to go to full administrative site plan review, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned, that would be a significant streamlining in projects that are subject to Opportunity Housing. But right now, under the Planning Commission recommendation of expanded administrative approval authority, most projects, you know, to be subject to the ordinance, you have to have 20 units, and so most projects are going to exceed that threshold of what is being contemplated in the Planning Commission recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Council, if there's, are there any more dig-in, specific kind of questions? Otherwise, I want to go through, I mean, just these key questions, and this, of course, is a study session, and this isn't the final vote, one way or another, but generally, do we concur with the Planning Commission recommendations on all the, on the sub-projects, for the most part? Any that stand out, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I'd still advocate for option one for number two. If it meets the conditions, let it be administratively approved.
Very good, thank you. Any additional? You went away from the questions you wanted answered.
Well, Mayor, what I would suggest is, if the body is generally supportive of the Planning Commission recommendations, I can take that feedback, and that can fuel, funnel into the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, into the subsequent ordinance that we will write. But if there is a deviation, as I think Councilmember Nelson is proposing here, what would be helpful to staff is to get clear direction, either via some kind of discussion, or hand poll, or show of hands to point us in the right direction on that specific question.
Understood. So in 20 words or less, Councilmember Nelson, what specifically, and then specifically, are you looking at, are you concerned with, or would like to see a change with, and then we can do a quick poll here?
I would expand the Planning Manager Staff Approval Authority for FSBPs of projects that meet code standards.
Everybody understand that?
Did it make count?
Code compliant?
If they're code compliant, give it.
If they're code compliant, yep.
Irrespective of size?
I have one clarifying question for that, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Does, that sounds reasonable to me, if we look at like what we currently have as our standards, right? Code compliance. The question is, we have other things in here that are, we're also going to be providing direction on that actively changes the code compliance question for certain uses. And I, so it's kind of hard for me to say, yeah, we should just give administrative approval to all of these uses, when we haven't seen the uses changed yet, and we don't know, like, the some body of the uses that we're actually referring that to. Including that we may have code compliance changes that come from work that the Planning Commission is doing later in this year. So it doesn't bother me to consider, I generally agree with the theory, like, if it's code compliant, it's, it's, the appeals process is silly, just because, like, eventually we're going to have to, or we're going to get in trouble. So I get all of that, it's just that there's, that is a moving target right now, because of the other requested changes that we're considering. So maybe, maybe that needs to be repackaged in such a way that we can say, like, yep, we agree that we should give administrative approval to code-compliant projects, and by the way, these are all the things that are changing about code compliance, so we understand the body of work that we're talking about when we say yes to that, if that's something that's doable.
Mr. Johnson, is that, can you finesse that in such a way?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, thank you for those points. I just want to, and I'm not trying to steer you in any, either one direction in this particular case. Ultimately, as a staff recommendation, we favored the expansion, as opposed to the full admin, and I can explain why that, and there was, you know, there was disagreement or healthy debate among staff about that. It wasn't a clear all one direction or the other, there was good discussion to be had. But the point is, is that something Um, uh, but the point is, is that something, uh, uh, there's not without cost in either direction that you choose to go. One point I will make, hopefully provides a little, uh, additional information that I haven't provided, is that administrative final site and building plans currently can only be appealed by the applicant, according to our city code, not by a member of the public, not by another body, not by that. And the reason being is that there is no public notification associated. So ultimately typically the, the public is not, uh, in a posture or position unless they are tracking, uh, a site so closely that they are calling our department every single day and checking our city view portal, which is public, uh, by the way, to the point about transparency and, um, all of those things are resources that we have online and we have a development map that we host. Every time someone applies, we put projects on our development map that meet a certain size threshold and we'll continue to do that and we can expand doing that. But there's no formal public notification, uh, in terms of a mailed notice. I just wanna be clear about that for administrative applications. So that's lost. What's gained is, uh, the fact that, uh, you're saving a significant amount of time and money, um, for projects that ultimately meet code. And if I didn't say that clearly before, I will say it again, staff can't approve applications that don't meet code. That's why, uh, a variance exists, that's why plan developments exist. Staff has no authority to do that and it would be illegal, uh, for us to do that.
That makes sense?
It does. Thanks. And I don't know if this helps or not, but that's why we kind of, and there was more of these in the exhibit. I didn't print it, but, uh, in your packet, there was more of, more projects, examples of projects. And I think just, I don't know if it guides you or not, um, but, uh, just thinking about scale and, um, uh, part of, most of me agrees with, uh, your perspective about if it meets code. Uh, but I think it's also important to acknowledge the fact that there could be, uh, some quite large, you know, uh, developments that get approved, uh, in that manner. And I said this before, but many final site and building plan applications do, are bundled with rezonings or other requirements too. And then it's, then it isn't administrative anyway you slice it, so, but just a couple more data points to think about.
So just in, in general, let's, let's keep this moving a little bit if we could, Councilmember. Uh, so, uh, Councilmember, uh, Nelson is, is, uh, as long, is suggesting that as long as a project is code compliant, it moves on. It doesn't necessarily, we don't have to parse anything here. Uh, Councilmember Dallisandro bringing up some concerns and I think, Mr. Johnson, some staff concerns as well. So just kind of a general thumbs up or thumbs down from folks as to, Councilmember Nelson's thoughts on this, thumbs up or thumbs down?
I, I'm okay with the, I'm okay with that, with the proposal. I think, like I said, I think that, um, there's probably some conditions I will wanna put on it later, but it, let's go that way and then come back down, like, you know what I mean? Um, maybe, maybe a certain size limit, for example. Like if it's over a certain size, maybe we shouldn't let it happen or something. Just because we will, we would want public interest potentially to be considered, that kind of thing.
Understood. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, Mayor, if I might, I'm actually very comfortable with the recommendation from them as well. I just would go further than that and this might be a very good step and just something for staff to keep in the back of their mind, that it may be a change that can be made in the future. Hopefully not fifteen years in the future, but, you know, in the future at some point. Um, the other thing, and again, I don't wanna take us on a tangent here, because it's not what we're here to talk about, but we should take a look at the notification on those. Um, I know a lot of municipalities require someone to put a sign out that this is subject to a, um, planning approval development coming or something like that. They put a sign right on the site so people driving by there see that this is happening. Again, don't wanna take us on a tangent, that's not what we're here to talk about, but we should look at those notifications, even on administrative ones. Should, should we be doing something more than that? Um, and, uh, we may already have some of that stuff here, just, it's, it's something important because even expanding the size of these, you know, there, there's gonna be some people that have some input and, and, you know, even now with all the notifications, we hear from people that like, I didn't know about this. Yeah, and so, you know, just always looking at what we can do to be, to be fair.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm just gonna respond to the comments from Councilmember Nelson that, uh, you know, we've trying this, right? And, and see how it plays out, as other council members have said as well. Um, and I, I've heard a couple of different council members, uh, Councilmember Lowman indicated comfort level with the fifty-seven as opposed to the forty-five, right? And so I think in this spirit of, we can do something, we can see how it fits and then we can amend as we go. Um, I, I think that we're open to working with the council to make that happen. So, uh, if, if everybody's comfortable with that, I think that we could proceed in that way. But I did, I didn't wanna lose sight of what Councilmember Lowman said too about the fifty-seven versus the forty-five.
I'm seeing a, a definite split, but I think, uh, maybe we, unless there's strong opposition, I think maybe councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson's idea to move forward with it and at least consider it. And as we have the public hearing and as we have the, uh, the further discussion on it as it comes up, uh, in the future, as we look at these, we can always revisit this conversation then, right? Councilmember Dallisandro?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, were there a couple of other questions in there, like the ones, the three that they had that they were not in agreement on? We, we wanna weigh in on those as well?
I, I, I would like that, yes. And those three were cemeteries, rooftop or outdoor patios, and then congregate living facilities. And frankly, I didn't know cemeteries were an issue. Uh, I didn't know that we were looking at additional cemeteries in Bloomington, but.
Uh, Mayor, that may have helped, or that may have informed the staff recommendation to make it a permitted use. And, uh, we have two cemeteries in town and, um, we're not getting calls for potential expansion of those uses right now. Um, uh, cemeteries must be a minimum of ten acres in size. Uh, but they are a use in the R-one district and currently they're designated as conditional. So based on that minimum size requirement, not many R-one sites, except for institutional sites and the like, um, uh, are, are ten acres in size. So we didn't have a concern about someone establishing a new cemetery, um, on that basis. And we think it would just make the process easier for the existing cemeteries that do exist to make any potential, uh, changes at their sites. Um, it's a low wattage, it's not a, it's not a critical one, um, either way, but they flagged it. Um, yeah.
So, uh, because you brought it up, Councilmember Dallisandro, uh, thoughts or ideas on rooftop or outdoor patios and/or congregate living facilities?
Yep, and, and I, I think I have the, a, a, um, definition of congregate living facilities. Are we talking about our group homes? Right, okay, so I, I think, um, I, I'm a little confused candidly that we call those city, city, um, uh, city licensed when they're not, they're, they're permitted by the city, but they're not licensed by the city, if I understand it correctly. So, um, I, I have more problems with the licensing and the enforcement of proper handling of those in the license than I do in permitting them. So I guess I, I would say go ahead and do those as permitted uses as well as the cemetery. Um, I think the, we're a little nascent as it goes with the, uh, with the rooftops and stuff like that. And, um, I'm a, I think we probably could, should leave those as conditional use for now and we can, we can work through some of that, maybe we can readdress that later. So that's my opinion on those three.
Other thoughts on that? We, we just approved one tonight, so. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, my only thought on that is just in general, as we change standards, we should include as part of that process to look at whether or not it should then go to be in a permitted use. So if we change standards about these open rooftop spaces and things like that, we tighten those up, make sure part of that process is to say, hey, we'd recommend now put it as permitted use. We think we got the right, we got the right approach now. When you have a newer use where we have confusion, where we're still trying to work things out, keep it conditional. That makes sense to me.
Right. Yep. Concurrence there with that, uh, council?
Mayor, if I may just provide a little more clarification on congregate living is that this is the larger facilities. It's not the group homes in low-density residential neighborhoods. The one, this use actually is equivalent to multifamily, basically. It's only allowed in multifamily districts. And I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, uh, stop the momentum that just occurred right there, but if I can just provide a little more, uh, explanation about the patios. Um, right now, what staff is trying to do is to make it a little bit easier for, uh, smaller restaurants to have sidewalk cafes, basically. Right now, if you have a large rooftop patio or if you have a, a five-seat outdoor dining, it's, it's equivalent in our code. And so, um, if not made a full permitted use, and we think that there are some standards that you could add that would address some of the noise or nuisance concerns, we think at minimum either separating rooftop from at-grade as different or, uh, if you wanted to go even further, you could say outdoor dining less than a certain number, which there's less potential for nuisance. Um, I don't wanna sidetrack the discussion that just, or the consensus that was just reached, but I just wondered, I didn't say that before, explain, um, why, uh, why we think it's important to do something.
I, I appreciate the context and, and I did sidetrack things a bit, but I do think it's an important distinction to be made. And I think, I've seen the nodding heads, I think the, the staff or the, the council's concurrence with staff that they're not the same. I mean, a, a, a restaurant with four tables outside is, is different than a, than a bar, than a rooftop bar. So do you have?
So Mayor, I, I think, I mean, as an alternative option, if the body was not comfortable designating, uh, the full grouping as permitted, if they wanted to retain some level of conditional use permit for that use, generally you could separate rooftop from just general outdoor dining. Or we could establish, or you could give us general direction to establish a scale at which it, it kicks into a conditional use permit.
I would, I would vote for B there so we can have that conversation about what that scale might be and now where we might wanna start making distinctions. I think that would make sense. All right?
So to clarify, we would bring something in the ordinance.
Please, yes.
That would mirror that direction and, uh, it could be amended or, uh, visited at that point. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any sort of directions?
I just, maybe I'm dense, but I just wanna clarify, there was discussion about what to do with final site plan, final site and building plan review, and maybe I was unclear on where the final direction landed on whether to follow the planning commission recommendation, so which is expanding the existing authority or just pursuing full administrative site plan review. I just wanna clarify that one point.
Uh, I was hearing from this group that the full administrative, yes, the, the, the full administrative site plan review. I mean, that's what I was, that's what I was hearing from the group. Am I correct in that?
On the permitted uses or in general?
On, on the permitted uses is what I understood. And because they're as permitted uses, as Mr. Johnson said, staff can't approve anything that's not a permitted use. So it's permitted uses. Code compliant, permitted, that kind of.
Like I said, my only concern was that we're going to be making a lot of changes to the notion of conditional use versus permitted use and it may get lost in the shuffle what we've put over there in that pile that then gets administrative review. And then to, to Councilmember Nelson's good point, let's make sure we take a look at the, the notice and/or some other creative ways that we can make sure we maintain transparency with the public. But yeah, otherwise, I, I think that's right, at least from my perspective.
I would agree. And I agree, Councilmember Nelson, all the social media in the world, but put a sign out and, put, put it on the fence somewhere and you'll, you'll get more attention.
I remember the former mayor recommended a bulldozer.
That too? Mr. Johnson, do you have enough to work with there?
I believe I do.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you on that one. And you're not gonna go anywhere. Item five point two.
Unfortunate for you.
This is our second study item of the evening, this regarding single-room occupancy or co-living standards. Do you need a chance to, a, a chance to catch your breath and take a drink?
Nope, I'm okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the second study item, uh, and I appreciate the diligent discussion on the last item, thank you, um, uh, has to do with single-room occupancy and co-living. Just by way of background, um, uh, the council and planning commission previously did a pretty extensive study session about the potential for use conversion, uh, specifically hotel and office to residential. And so, um, not, not that this is the same content, but I just wanna say that this in a way builds off some of that content, because I think that really got this conversation started, um, uh, in a way. So I do wanna point to that. Uh, but again, this is, uh, also a project on the planning commission work plan and, uh, similar just agenda slide here of what I'll, I'll talk about what, um, single-room occupancy and co-living is and what it isn't and why should, uh, cities consider, uh, expanding allowances, uh, for it. And I'll talk about what our existing code speaks to it and, uh, again, try and solicit some, uh, direction from you on some specific amendments. Um, so what is, uh, SROs or co-living? I would just start by saying, single-room occupancy is starting to be considered an out-of-date term or a less preferred term, uh, for this development type. More cities are going towards, uh, and I should say is driven by the development community more, uh, are using the term co-living or co-housing. Um, I think they're trying to, uh, avoid association with previous generations of this use type because frankly, they're very different. Um, these uses can be highly amenitized, they can look very different and they can, uh, have different use characteristics than a boarding house, say that was built, you know, sixty, eighty years ago, whatever the case may be. Um, but just from a, you know, functional definition standpoint, what is it? It's bedrooms that are rented as individual units. Um, uh, it's, uh, they're inherently more affordable than typically multifamily, uh, just on the basis when you're renting individual, uh, bedrooms. Uh, you're still, you're constructing one kitchen, uh, for example, for, uh, these units. Um, uh, some, uh, co-living have bathrooms in units, some do not. I mean, that's another huge potential cost savings, um, but speak to the different levels that may exist in the market right now. Um, these uses do have, uh, hat, there is some application of use conversion, uh, to, uh, co-living or co-housing, SROs. Hotel is the most obvious, uh, um, candidate for that. Um, but from a Bloomington context, and I'll speak to that second, um, you know, office, uh, just with the current commercial real estate dynamics, office in the future might be, um, a, a candidate for that, assuming some rough patches with the building and fire codes, uh, can, uh, over time, uh, be smoothed over. Um, newer, I said this already, but new co-living developments, uh, can have significant amenities. Um, that's, uh, it can look a wide scale of outcomes. Um, these housing types are not, uh, significantly present in the Twin Cities region yet. They are more common in the most expensive housing markets in the country. Think of the biggest, uh, cities in the United States. Uh, Chicago has a significant amount of them. The coastal cities obviously, uh, are, uh, very, uh, expensive housing markets. So you start to see this use, uh, an appetite for this use increase, uh, with more, um, expensive housing markets. There is little individual considerations or unique to communities. University towns, for example, can see more of this, uh, just on the basis of trying to find more affordable rents uh, for, uh, younger, uh, residents, um, for example. So the scale and size of co-living can vary greatly. This is the one that maybe, uh, um, I didn't think about as much at the beginning of the study that I learned more about as I went. Um, but just for the purposes of clarification, the study that was, will be presented to you and the information in the packet focused on housing without services. So we talked about group homes or residential care facilities or congregate living. Um, that is a, uh, SRO's fit currently in the, the umbrella of congregate living in our zoning code. Um, but for the purposes of this, we're talking about housing without services, not with services. Um, some local examples, this is a, a development, uh, that's set to begin in August that came to our attention. Um, uh, it's called the Little Mod. The reason I bring this to your attention is A, the scale is quite small. Um, just from, it's not what you would think of for an SRO development. Uh, but just from a regulatory standpoint, it's kind of interesting and will, and will be an important discussion point for tonight is that there is some ability to, to create, uh, co-living, uh, within lower-density residential, uh, uses or, um, structures, uh, just simply by abiding by the occupancy requirements of whatever cities require. So every city establishes a limit on the number of unrelated or other forms of relationship adults that can reside within a dwelling. Uh, this particular project in St. Paul was not approved as a co-living development. It's approved as a, as a duplex, as a two-family dwelling. Um, and the occupancy requirement in St. Paul is six, uh, adults and minor children and their care. So that's how you get to twelve bedrooms and two, uh, dwellings. So I thought that was just a good example, just from a perspective of something lower in scale. Uh, Ratio Apartments was built in Columbia Heights in twenty twenty-two. Um, uh, this is mixed with typical market rate multifamily and it's a very small percentage of their units. This is over a two-hundred-and-fifty-unit building. Only ten of their units are, uh, currently, uh, co-housing or co-living. But the, I spoke with the developer, they're really appreciative of the flexibility to move units back and forth uh, to this arrangement, uh, on the basis of what the, the demand, uh, is. Um, and it allows them, uh, to, um, uh, kinda have greater flexibility built up within to their project. Um, the main reason that people are looking at this is because affordability is a big deal. And, uh, you know, the studio apartments in this building typically, uh, cost somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred dollars, seventeen hundred dollars. They're renting some of these, uh, units, uh, these, these bedroom co-living suites at under a thousand dollars. So there's a significant cost savings in the rent. Um, and, uh, um, I mentioned amenities, this is a highly amenitized, uh, project. If you look it up, um, in Columbia Heights, it's in a very transit-rich area, uh, which I think helps with some of the parking. But the floor plan is, uh, um, kind of interesting. So each, uh, unit, uh, has its own bathroom. Uh, the only thing that they share is just some common space and the kitchen, uh, facilities within these co-living suites. So that's in Columbia Heights. facilities within these co-living suites. So that's in Columbia Heights. Alatus was the developer of that project. So why, why is this relevant to Bloomington? So, A, demographics, Bloomington is the fourth oldest city in the Twin Cities. There's a lot of consideration to be paid for co-living or co-housing for older residents. With respect to affordability is obviously very important. But there's also been some discussion around how co-living, you know, whether it be in a low-density environment or a higher-density environment could actually be a good fit for some older residents to help combat social, social isolation. As residents get older, sometimes they tend to get a little further away from family. Some of these living environments, especially with friends or known acquaintances, can be a really good outcome for some of those folks. Reuse or conversion opportunities, as I've talked about, there was a lot of pressure or interest on the Bloomington's hotel market when the pandemic occurred. This pressure has since kind of receded. And hotel, the occupancy level in hotels is close to back to pre-pandemic levels. That's good news. And so we think where there's could be potential or maybe some interest is probably in Class C office-type space in Bloomington, with kind of the consolidation and the movement that's happening around businesses reducing their footprint in terms of the amount of office space that they have. There's kind of a big shuffling that's occurring from talking to the city assessor. So what ultimately that might result in is some Class C office no longer being occupied. Could be a conversion opportunity, or it could be a scrape and rebuild opportunity. And obviously, it would want to depend on, you know, it being a good site for residential. Student housing, Bloomington has four post-secondary educational institutions. Not, most of the students who attend those schools do commute, so we don't know what the demand is. We don't anticipate it would be significant demand, but particularly Normandale, it would probably be beneficial to be able to construct some type of student housing in close proximity to that institution, and it would be good for students. So you could envision where, you know, in a lower-density environment around, close to Normandale, maybe some co-housing would be beneficial in a modest scale. Proximity to the airport, so it's one of the issues, one of the ways this issue comes to the forefront is we kept hearing about crash pads, crash pads. And, you know, we don't, I don't, I haven't found, maybe someone else has this data that I'm not aware of, but I don't know how many people who are employed at the airport reside in Bloomington. But we do get the sense that there is some demand, that co-living would be a good solution for people who are out of town ten days a month or fifteen days a month as part of their job. Maybe they don't need a full apartment to themselves. Maybe a co-living solution closer to MSP or National would be a desired outcome. And finally, why are we looking at this? The Hennepin County did a broad study about it in 21. Many of the recommendations that that task force made kind of are reflected in the recommendations that Planning Commission and staff is presenting to you tonight. Just on this point of affordability, I kind of glossed over that one, forgive me, but I got a slide dedicated to it. The reason that people are interested in co-living or co-housing is has the ability to deliver more affordability, and in some instances with less or no subsidy, depending on the amenities or the finishes of, of the housing. So this is just a reminder that while the Opportunity Housing Ordinance has been immensely successful at delivering sixty and fifty percent AMI units, it's still tremendously hard or very difficult to deliver on the deeply affordable units, the thirty percent AMI. I don't want to represent SROs or co-living as a magic bullet to that effect. It's still very hard to deliver thirty percent AMI units. But I think it would give cities, HRAs, you know, county nonprofit actors more tools in the toolbox to look at how to create that. And maybe it would make more sense in a use conversion situation theoretically. So just a, a point on the numbers again. I don't need to get into great detail about this, but the big point here is that we don't have a use in our zoning code that aligns well with co-housing or co-living or SROs. Right now, we have congregate living, which includes a very broad umbrella of kind of joint housing with or without services and with some shared facilities. That includes a wide variety of things. We have dormitory, dormitory, but obviously, that's limited to a college or university setting. So this is a little bit of a gap in our code right now. Congregate living is conditional in the higher-density residential districts, but for the most part, it's not allowed in our commercial zoning districts. We'll see what streamlining does with that to, to potentially change that. But one of the ways, and this was in the county task force report, one of the ways to potentially allow for more conversions or to make it more feasible to build this type of housing is to make it permitted or allowed in commercial districts. Right now, it's not allowed. Multifamily residential is allowed in our commercial zoning districts, so long as you build a minimum amount of commercial floor area. The code could be very easily changed to have that same allowance or that pathway for co-living or co-housing. Dormitories are conditional in R1, again, that's not really relevant, just with the specific nature of that. We do have use standards for congregate living, and we do have use standards for institutional uses, although that institutional use standard is more applied to the housing with services. So getting to another kind of a key nuts and bolts issue, at least, at least from one member of the development community who spoke to me about this, is that if you want to enable co-living or co-housing, it's raise your residential occupancy requirement. Most cities are about where Bloomington is. This is our definition of a family. One dwelling can be occupied by a family, and they have to be. It's one or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, you know, other legal considerations, obviously, that would make one a family, or it is for unrelated adults. One anecdote that Environmental Health shared with me, which is interesting, or kind of puts a broader, easier point on the matter, is that if you're six brothers and sisters, you can live together in Bloomington. If you're in a group home, six people can live together. If you're not, one of those things, you're limited to four. There is not a ton, but anecdotal understanding and experiences with rental properties in Bloomington that don't just rent their whole house. They rent units to rumor, rumors or sub, sublease units. This is legal, and it completely complies with zoning currently. So one of the things that likely should be done in the cut, just, or code, excuse me, just as a, a functional improvement, as a clarification, is to alert the public or clarify that co-housing, co-living is allowed in other residential dwelling types, so long as you comply with occupancy requirements. So this developer said, you want to enable co-housing, then raise your occupancy requirement. As I mentioned, St. Paul, St. Paul went up to six, six adults and children in their care. We can do more research about other cities, and we can deliver that to you. I think anecdotally, most cities are where Bloomington is right now. This has also been raised as an equity issue, certainly. The nature of human relationships are complex, and not always just defined by whatever legal status you have. And I would note that we did do some amendments to the rental housing code about this issue in 2021 or 2022, I believe it was. And so this would almost be like a second phase of that work in effect, if directed to do so and do that research. So the first question that we posed to the planning commission and posed to you is, you know, does the city want to support or enable more and larger SRO, SRO or co-living developments? If yes, there's multiple actions that can be taken. Putting a more specific point to it, these are kind of the six areas that we see as, you know, building out or growing the regulatory environment and allowances for co-living, co-housing SROs. One is clarify the status within the code, I just mentioned that. Increase the occupancy limitations, create a specific use in code, because this use could theoretically be created in low-density environments already. We think that the use specific should apply to larger co-living or co-housing developments, where there's kind of more impact, if you will. Allow these use types in commercial zoning dis, as, commercial zoning districts, forgive me, equivalent to multifamily. And then create use standards. You know, we have use standards for multifamily, we have use standards for a number of different things. Different potential standards could be requiring a certain amount of common space per bedroom, or you could theoretically incentivize restroom facilities and within units. There, you talked about, well, that's the next item, but you could incentivize certain things. You could create somewhat lesser parking standards for this use, if in close proximity to robust transit locations, for example. And then finally, the mayor's point earlier on the OHO is that if you do create co-living, co-housing use, there would need to be some work done with our port and HRA staff who manage the Opportunity Housing Ordinance to make sure that that is incorporated and well, well-aligned with the incentives that already exist for multifamily. So those are the six things we see as the planning division staff and in consultation with our other members of community development and elsewhere in the city of Bloomington. But yeah, I would be happy to take your questions and feedback about this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council questions and/or feedback? We can, we can dive right into the whole thing. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've seen this presentation before, because we've got it on the HRA. So I don't have very many questions. I just wanted to express my support. I think this makes a lot of sense. It gives the market another option for housing. And we hear often about issues related to affordability, right? We hear, we have young people who come in who say, hey, I grew up here and I can't afford to stay here, and I really want to. We have seniors who want to leave their, you know, single-family homes, but they don't want to leave Bloomington, and they don't have a lot of options. And so, you know, I think that this, again, gives developers, it gives the market another option for developing housing in Bloomington. And so as I think, or as I run through this list, I guess I would say thumbs up to all of them. And I think it just makes sense with the direction that we're going with our strategic plan and what we've laid out as priorities over the past several years.
Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember Mua. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I've got a quick question in terms of how SROs, in particular, in residential house relate to an ADU, which I know is not, has not been something that a lot of people have done, but is an option if you want to go beyond the four people, is my understanding. But you have a lot more work to do. Is that, can you describe that for me?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I, I don't have the ADU standards. Forgive, I might get this wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, is that we used to have occupancy requirement for the number of people that could be in an ADU. And I think we got rid of that, and now we have a maximum number of bedrooms that can be in an ADU. It's two, two bedrooms. So assuming they were just complying, it's a dwelling, so it would just be subject to the same occupancy requirements as a single-family home, effectively.
So my understanding.
Two bedrooms.
My understanding is the, the main, the principal family that was living there owned the house, you know, it could be a family of four, you know, we've got two kids, and you could rent to, you know, a family of three that was in the basement. But the ADU required separate entrance, separate kitchen, separate bathroom, all of that. And this, what actually is allowed right now is you can just rent out your bedroom to somebody else, but you can't exceed four people total. So if you were a family of four, you can't rent out the bedroom to your brother-in-law or something like that. Okay. But even though they're family?
Mayor.
Your friend, your best frie, your best, the best man in your wedding, not your brother-in-law.
Your best friend in your wedding is not welcome, no.
Okay, good. Glad to know that. I'll let him know. So in general, on the other ones, I'm supportive. The only small apprehension I have, it's something of one of our principles in the OHO, is integration. And on a larger scale of these projects, to have these, to have that many units at what I would imagine to be affordable to deeply affordable, is a lot of concentration. And so, you know, the example that you gave, where that was, this was part of the building, and then there were other units, it was highly amenitized, that type of approach makes more sense. The challenge there, that I understand from talking to, to folks in the business, is the services side, is it's hard to then provide the services there. So there's some balances there. I don't have the answer to that, but that, that integration component, to me, is important to maintain.
Councilmember Mua, and then Councilmember Milloman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm a little torn between the SROs, because we've focused a lot on one portion of the housing spectrum, and I would love to see more focus on other parts of the housing spectrum, especially the homeownership piece of it. And this continues to, you know, support the, the rental piece of it, that's part of the housing continuum. But literally, two weeks ago, we went to my wife's grandma's ninety-sixth birthday, and we had a conversation about this, and she said, when I was a kid in thirties, my mother had a boarding house, because it was two blocks away from the train stop, and guys who didn't have work would come mow the grass, and they would live in a room. And that provided her mother with an opportunity to create income for their family, but also give people an opportunity to live in something that's affordable. And so I, I understand and see the advantages of this RO. I think we can do more to allow people within the community to create those opportunities, to create income and businesses in their, their own. But I also think this continues to support only one spectrum of the housing continuum, and I want to see us continue to, or get into more of the other opportunities. So it's kind of a up-in-the-air answer, not much clarity. I'm definitely willing to hear it out and see what we can come up with this, to see if it makes sense right now, or if it's something that might be better off for us as the city grows and changes in the next couple decades.
Councilmember Milloman, and Councilmember DeLaSandro, Councilmember Milloman.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I look at this, it looks pretty, pretty plain in terms of the recommendation that's, that's coming before us. There's a lot of support around doing all of these items. But I guess where my, my concern lies is, again, around this, this integration and the concentration of poverty. I want to be certain that we're not, we're not doing that as we get ready to do these types of things. I just, I think from a, from an elemental standpoint, especially when you talk about, you know, the, the ownership being a little more, you know, based on rental, it, it does, you know, create that, that situation. And then when you also create that, you sometimes create unintended consequences, you know, around property values. And so I would be really interested to see how we control for, for those, those, those factors as, as it relates to that. I remember when we had the crash pad that came before us, a generational, and just how, you know, quickly we shut that thing down. And there was various types of reasons why, why we did that, and we weren't comfortable with that. I mean, to me at the time, I kind of, well, you know, you know, you got the airport right there, it kind of makes sense. And there was, there was a couple of us who were considering it, but, you know, this council didn't, didn't go for that. So I, I'm interested to kind of, you know, have more of a review of some of those other elements that have come before us. The other concern I have is around, you know, if there's been anything around sex trafficking, or any of those elements that this opens us up to, in terms of how that, how those are controlled for, you know, one, if there's a concern around that, and, and, and two, you know, is there a way to kind of, you know, prevent that, or, you know, maybe I'm just, you know. I do agree with my other councilmember colleague around, you know, I mean, I wouldn't stop this, definitely should move this forward. My, my opinion, save for those things I'm concerned about. But ownership needs to be something that we kind of look at. I think that, that idea of, you know, we talk about, you know, as our demographic shift and change, we really need to keep that ownership piece in front of us, because having the opportunity to own a portion of Bloomington, I think is an important stake in the future of our community. And it is, it's generational-wide in terms of, of that scope. And I think that that importance is something we really need to kind of move forward, Mayor. And I hope that we can kind of get to that. I know there's a number of us, councilmembers, who've been really pushing for that. I hope we get to that.
Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I'm of, I'm of a similar mind regarding what you've asked for here. I think that ultimately, these, these are the right areas to rejigger, if you will, in order to create the opportunities here. I think, for me, and I think about, like, if I'm on Eighty-Fourth Street, I'm right across from Northwest Sciences University, for example. There are a lot of smaller homes right there that rent rooms. And, you know, if, if the folks at Northwest Sciences University wanted to actually build a facility like this, because they have the land for it, maybe those people would move over there, and we could actually get some ownership housing back in that neighborhood, which would appeal to a lot of people. So I think, you know, we also have to think about this at the, at the, at the level where, you know, are we, are we providing, if somebody has to pay for a studio today at twelve hundred dollars or fifteen hundred dollars, and they could pay a thousand dollars, and they could take that five hundred dollars a month and save it for a down payment on a house, that could be a good thing, right? And so it, it, it matters that we are thinking about all of these options and how we move them on the, on the chessboard here. Homeownership is certainly very, very important. And I, I'm frustrated as everybody else is that we can't get condos built, because condos are the number one else is that we can't get condos built because condos are the number one way that most people buy their, their first home. In every place I've ever lived, I've bought a house. My first house in Austin was a condo, my first house in San Francisco was a condo, my first house here was a condo. It's what people do and we don't have any in Bloomington that are readily available and they're not being built. And so I don't think this conflicts with that. I think this is something we need to do to give people affordable options. If market rate for an SRO is $800, we're gonna hit that threshold for 30% A M I anyway. And, uh, and that might be great regardless of whether we call it deeply affordable or market rate. So I, I think we can do this, but I, you know, I, I, n- nothing in my opinion that we have done in the last two years on housing has gotten us the ability to get condos built in the city and it is the most frustrating aspect of the work that we do and it has nothing to do with any of us that are, like, here right now, right? It's just so very frustrating. And so I appeal to anybody watching this right now to say, we are going to continue to move the pieces on the chessboard, but please come build some fricking condos, please. Like, take the risk because I think we'll, we'll support you. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Rivas?
I just have a quick question. Um, probably it's not been related to this, but are there any plans since this will increase population, obviously, right? I'm not against it. I mean, if, if, if we can help people, you know, have a, a, a living, a roof over their heads, I guess, it's, it's, it's a good thing. But I'm, I'm curious to know if, since this would increase the density of a population in specific areas, are, are you making any plans to, to, uh, improve the, the sewer, uh, water lines and all that stuff before this actually happens? So we don't see ourselves, uh, thinking that a big building, I'm just thinking of what's going on, right? That we're gonna build a, a, you know, 10, 15-story building with 400, 500, uh, units and then we don't have the sewer capacity in the area once the building is going up? And now we have to either tax the population more to provide the funds to do a work that needs to be done as in an emergency situation at, at that point? Are there any plans to improve the sewer systems and the water lines and all the utilities necessary to increase the population in these areas? Well, because I'm, I'm thinking that you already might have designated places in the city that this could happen. Because it can't happen everywhere, right? Um, so is there, are there any plans for that already?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember, excuse me, Mayor, councilmember Rivas, thank you for that question and, um, I don't know if it will, uh, be good or humor to you to hear that I've been in several development meetings where our utility staff has just had to inform development community that they can't build, uh, what they want to build in a particular location based on that very issue. So, um, nothing is going to get built, uh, due to the, due to the thoroughness and due diligence of our utility staff in an area that can't handle it, um, because there's a lot of smart people across 98th Street who are doing a model, a full citywide model and looking at the sewer capacity, uh, of the potential development. I can think of a few areas that currently, uh, have that issue. Uh, but the other way that we ensure that adequate infrastructure exists for larger forms of this development is to limit it to zoning districts that are served by, uh, roadways, for example, that have adequate capacity. So collector and arterial roads, uh, for example. Um, if you're talking about low density settings, then I think what the issue is it has to do with what are your standards around, uh, property maintenance and, uh, you know, on-street parking and how many vehicles you can have outside a home. We already have rules and regulations for those types of things. So even if you established a co-housing, um, situation in a low density area, you're still subject to some of those rules and regulations. Um, so I think yes, I think ensuring that you have the right rules and the right infrastructure in place is where do you allow the bigger ones to exist? Equivalent to multifamily, similar to the same conversation of where do you put an apartment building? Because it's very similar in terms of its impact, in terms of its use characteristics. There's just a little bit of nuances in terms of, um, the differences within the units themselves. Otherwise they function very similarly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Yes, I apologize. I got off on my condo tangent and forgot I had one other question.
That'll, that'll.
Do we, I apologize. Um, thank you. I appreciate your, uh, grace. Um, are there options? So I'm really intrigued by the, the senior living cohabitation thing. I'd often talks, talked to my friends, uh, a lot about like, we should take over the floor of someplace and just all live there together because that would make us happy. And, and certainly there are marginalized groups. I know there are, there are communities of, for queer people specifically because, uh, straight communities oftentimes don't accept them, right? And so there's these congre-, get living activities that happen a lot. So I'm intrigued by that, especially as I get into that age group, um, and, uh, you know, the cards are starting to show up. Um, the stupid A A R P, it's like, wait a minute. Um, but my, my question is, are there, are there options for us to incentivize models like co-op models in this, in this area whereas, where that you could provide some kind of fractional ownership opportunity or something like that so that we could make good on the ability for them to invest in that area? Or is that something that happens like between the developer and the people buying and it doesn't really have anything to do with us from a code perspective?
Mayor, councilmember Alessandro, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna answer your question directly, but what I would say is that the, the limited number, granted, of developers who are doing this in, uh, the Twin Cities that, who I've spoken with, uh, they're aiming for, uh, rent tenure of around six, uh, months is their goal. Right now they're seeing in the ratio apartments, for example, nine to 12 months is their typical length in lease. And sometimes they'll rent a unit elsewhere in the building, a full unit. Sometimes they'll buy that home like you talked about af- by, after saving some money or they, um, uh, they, uh, find accommodations elsewhere for other reasons. Um, so I think that the kind of model you're speaking to probably is a longer tenure, um, a longer, uh, living situation than that more limited, uh, rev-, uh, limited term. Um, but I mean, that's certainly something that we can look into.
No, I, I, yeah, I appreciate that. I think, um, more or less the generic question that I'm asking or the general question I'm asking is, do we have any influence on the ability for us to provide guidance and/or incentive and/or restriction even on, um, a co-op style model? Or does that like not even come into play with anything that we do? Like, it would never be on our radar to decide whether that's a good idea or a bad idea or to incentivize or not incentivize.
No, I appreciate it. One of the reasons I'm here is not only to get your affirmation that this is the right direction, but to get more ideas. And, uh, so I consider this an idea. I consider research about the public safety component you asked about. Um, these are areas of research that we need to do more work on.
Okay.
Um, so we can certainly do that. And while I have the mic briefly, one thing I forgot to mention in my presentation is that, yes, the planning commission reviewed this item and was supportive. I forgot to tell you that. Um, but the H R A did provide good feedback, so thank you for that as well. But the one thing the planning commission did request, and I think we support this, is as opposed to the last study item, which is more fully baked, we're very, we're being very granular and specific about what we're, uh, recommending and what, uh, we're asking to include in the ordinance on this one. I think we still have a little bit more work to do. So I think what, what we'll do is bring a draft ordinance back in a study session format and maybe it's a more limited study session, maybe it's not as long. Um, but, uh, at least that way you can see a draft of what we're actually talking about prior to getting into a public hearing environment. So we committed to do that for planning commission and we're happy to do that for you too.
Great, well, I appreciate that. I, obviously, I don't expect you to know everything, Mr. Johnson, um, you know, I so appreciate you taking that, the item. The only other thing I would say since I, uh, Mr. Mayor is, um, that I, I, I am, I don't have a problem, I, I don't really have a problem with short-term rental, generally speaking. As you all know, I'm, I'm, you know, and I know.
Different subject, councilmember.
Well, it is and it's not in the sense that the six-month rental could be considered, you know, a short-term rental depending upon what your code says. I realize that. But I, you know, that the crash pad thing is what I'm thinking about more than anything, where you have, um, you know, groups of people who rent together a unit because they're never there more than a couple of hours at a time. And it is very popular around major airports because, uh, flight attendants. Um, oftentimes flight attendants do not get stationed where they live, right? So you could be, you could live here in Minneapolis, but my friend who was a flight attendant had her base of operation in LaGuardia. So, ruck, she, she didn't, she had to fly to LaGuardia on the first flight every Monday and then she had to find a place to stay there for three days before she could come back to Minneapolis and go home. And, you know, so there may be reasons to create an opportunity zone near, i- in the South Loop area that accommodates that particular function. And that's why I bring it up.
Thank you. And, and you can get a six-month lease in Bloomington?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Not over 30 days, right?
It, yes, yes. So I'm, 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 I'm hearing, uh, everyone agreeing that th- these are good ideas and and I think we want to head in this direction and continue this conversation. And I'll add my voice to that as well. Uh, but I'm gonna be the guy to say, I think we need to make sure, I, I appreciate you, you saying that you're kind of working your way through this. And I think to go as, as slow and as deliberate as possible to make sure that we do this right because there's a lot of ways, I think, it can go off the rails quickly. Um, and, and I, especially as we look at things like, for example, conversions in terms of the, the safety aspects of all those and not just the personal safety, but, you know, the fire code safety. How do you get that many people out if, if need be, you know, in, in, uh, a short period of time? Um, I, I would like to have the longer conversation about long-term maintenance and, and, uh, upkeep of these things. That, uh, rents at, you know, 700 bucks a month doesn't leave a whole lot left over for the long-term upkeep and maintenance of a, of a project like this. And I would hate to see something like, uh, to do it, one of those developments that you showed, those fancy, good-looking developments in Columbia Heights or in St. Paul, and then without the long-term plan to make sure that it stays looking good like that. Uh, I'm concerned about, um, around our, uh, around our universities and campuses. I mean, what you described here is a dorm, basically. And I, I would like to see, if they're gonna do dorms, I would like to see our, our campuses actually do dorms and, and we can get behind that, uh, because then that, that provides a different level of service and, and so on. But I would like to, to ensure that especially in a, a, a situation like that and speaking from experience from the University of Minnesota, I want to make sure that those neighborhoods aren't negatively impacted by something like this. And for that matter, and, and I will, uh, also echo this notion of, uh, too dense of a, a, too much densification in terms of what these are. I would love to see them, uh, integrated into other, other, uh, buildings, other developments, other possibilities. You know, one floor be this, the, the SROs, the co-living, and then the six other floors being a typical apartment complex. And, uh, so, and, and then notions of finishes and, and what should be in there and the services and the amenities and so on. I really want to make sure that we approach this very thoughtfully, that it's not just, um, a quick and dirty thing, but looking at it from a long-term, looking at it from a bigger picture standpoint, a bigger picture impact on the, on the community, on the neighbors, on the neighborhoods, and make sure that we do this right. Because I think it's the right idea. And, yeah, historically boarding houses worked very effectively and, and we could see ma- many benefits from that, but I want to make sure that we do this right if we're gonna do this.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Well done up there tonight. And, and I will say, I just, I sent Mr. Verbrugge a note that you've been knocking it out of the park lately, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Been killing it. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Our last item of the evening, council's item 5.3, our city council policy and issue update. Uh, I will summarize quickly our listening session and I will summarize it quickly because we only had one speaker. Sally Ness was with us again this evening, talking specifically about lighting and Dar Al Farouk in their parking lot and we had a conversation about that. Uh, but beyond that, uh, we had a couple of people who had called ahead to sign up, but, uh, were not there, so Sally was our only, were our only speaker this evening. Uh, the only other item that I had this evening, a, a couple of folks have mentioned at this, uh, the events of the past weekend, the, the attempt on former President Trump's life. Um, I, I hope we can all agree, A, that we wish for the best for, for anyone who is the subject of an assassination attempt and his family and, and so on. And also agree that political violence at whatever level, whether it's taking, you know, actually shooting at someone or, or, you know, physical violence or verbal violence, I, I hope we can all agree that there's no place for it on any side, in any way, at any level of government. And, uh, want to condemn that in, in all, in all forms. We see it, it's far too easy on social media now. It's far too easy in the anonymity, uh, on, in, online. And it just, it absolutely needs to stop. And I think, uh, I, I would hope that if anyone sees that or hears that within our community here in Bloomington, A, tell them to stop, that that is not, that's not how we, that's not how we operate. And B, uh, if it is legitimate threats of violence, to, to do what we can to, to get, uh, Chief Hodges and, and the B P D involved and, because this is just, uh, it can't continue. We can't continue as a community, we can't continue as a country if, if this is the, going to be the norm. And, um, so I just wanted to throw that out and hope I've got your support in those statements and, and those comments because we simply, we can't continue like this. So, Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And councilmembers, a little bit of, uh, follow-up on the storms that rolled through the other night and the power outages that we had throughout the community. And I appreciate a suggestion from councilmember Nelson earlier today, uh, since a number of, um, folks likely had outages extending long enough that, uh, perhaps some food spoilage happened. Uh, we do have organics, uh, drop-off sites, uh, if people don't have their own organics recycling, uh, at their house. Valley View Park and West Bay, uh, West Bush Lake Park, uh, also Hennepin County has the organics drop-off site at the South Hennepin Recycling and Problem Waste Drop-Off Center. Uh, so if, uh, your, your deep freeze or your fridge was not enough to contain, uh, things for a while, there's an option for you. So that information has been posted on Nextdoor and Facebook and it's on our, uh, homepage of the, uh, City of Bloomington website. Uh, we also sent out an email with, uh, those tips to our garbage and organics groups, which is more than 5,000 people. So appreciate suggestions, good idea. Uh, it's a little thing, I'm sure, for, for many people, but to the extent that we can be helpful, I appreciate the suggestions from council where we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Any questions of Mr. Verbrugge on that one? Councilmember Carter and then councilmember Alessandro. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a related note, um, I don't think a lot of people know that many homeowner insurance policies and I would hope rental policies as well, will, um, cover the cost of food that is, that goes bad during an outage. So, um, I have USA, I know USA will send me a check for the food that spoiled. Um, we just got our power on today, so very excited about that. Um, but I know a lot of people don't know about that, so just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Alessandro?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have one comment, but before that I also want to just, uh, thank you for your comments regarding the violence this weekend. Um, I want to noted that, you know, former President Trump was the least hurt among the folks in that, right? There were two seriously critically injured and one killed. And so violence is, um, has unintended consequences almost always, right? And, um, um, I hope that, I hope that maybe this is the thing, I don't know, i- if, if, if things like Sandy Hook don't do it, I don't, not sure how this does, but we've got to figure out how to become a less violent society. And I agree with you wholeheartedly and support that. Um, regarding the tree, the, the storms, um, I got several convers-, uh, several questions from folks. It, it kind of has underscored the, how, how potentially behind, maybe that's a bad way to say it, but behind we are on getting these dead ash trees down because I've had two neighbors contact me saying, um, their neighbor's tree broke their, their wires and that's why they're out of power. And so, you know, Excel is doing the best that it can, but we all as homeowners, if we have them or our neighbors, have obligations to make sure that we're taking good care of the trees that need to come down. And so to the extent that we can, um, maybe bolster that, I know, I know our foresters doing all the work on our public lands and everything, but how we can get folks to, to take that seriously and, and work through it, I think is really important. Um, the, in the end, the one individual that contacted me happened to have, you know, has a C P A P machine and like other, like, it, it can get be, it can be deadly, right? It can, and literally be deadly, uh, for people. And, uh, it is preventable, right? That's preventable. The storm isn't preventable, but making sure your trees are in the kind of shape that they need to be so that they don't bring down power lines is something you can do. And so I just want to encourage everybody to do that. Thanks.
Thank you for that, councilmember. Mr. Verbrugge.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Alessandro, thank you for saying so. Reminder that last year, the City Council made it easier for people to do that for trees on their private property. The cost of tree removal is significant, and it keeps going up, and so the council has made it possible for tree removal to be included as an assessment on property taxes, to defer at least the time to have to make that payment, and you can do it over a period of time and not just all at once. So appreciate you saying that.
And I also appreciate your bringing up the other victims of the shooting this weekend, and I apologize for forgetting that, but certainly they were victims as well. Councilmember Lohman.
I had two, but I'm going to roll it into one piece here, because I think there's a councilmember I'd like to get moving here tonight. So does the city have an elections plan around education and safety?
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, we do significant voter education leading up to the elections. Less so at this time of year before the primary, we see relatively little participation at this point, and I think there's only one seat that's on the primary ballot. But as we head into November, we will do quite a bit more. That voter education includes things like, where's your precinct at? And what are, what are the questions or the seats that are on the ballot, right? We have not discussed things like polling, location, safety in that voter education. And to some extent, you know, we don't, we encourage people to be safe, and we recognize that there are some free speech permissions that exist, but there are also proximity boundaries that go along with that, and what people can do, because voter intimidation is a real thing, and we recognize that. So we will make sure that we continue to communicate those things. Mostly that happens during our election judge training, which is going on right now, as a matter of fact. And so that list of folks that you saw earlier this evening, they get a significant amount of training and are well-equipped, especially the captains are really, really knowledgeable, right? And so these issues about, you know, whether somebody who might be protesting is too close to the polling place, they're knowledgeable in answering those things. So people can feel, I think, assured that we're preparing our election judges and for staff. It's a concern that we keep foremost.
Other questions, council? Anything else to bring up tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Alessandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to adjourn this evening? No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thanks much for the discussion this evening, council. Staff, well done, thank you very much. Thanks to everybody who stuck it out with us and was with us the rest of the whole evening. So thank you much, have a good Tuesday.